I'm going to call to order the July 11th meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment, Accessory Agency and Financing Authority. I'd like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the Pledge of Allegiance, which tonight will be led by Toby Ross. By the United States of America, the public of the privileged states. The council did meet in closed session this evening to confer with our legal counsel regarding an item of existing litigation, to authorize defensive litigation in case of Ziegler versus the city of West Sacramento. Case number is noted in our agenda. To consider approval to initiate or intervene in illegal action, no action was taken. To confer with our labor negotiator regarding negotiations with Local 522, no action was taken. And to appoint a law firm and special legal counsel, that's an agenda item later in our meeting as well, but to appoint special legal counsel with respect to the redevelopment agency, the former redevelopment agency. All right, that brings us to item 1A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the city council. As is noted on our agenda, we're unable to consider, discuss, or take action on any items that are brought up under item 1A, but it is an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone that wishes to address the council on this or any other item this evening to please fill out one of the yellow cards that's available at the front door and turn it into the city clerk. In front of the clerk is a timer that we use to make sure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard. And to that end, we ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is a flip chart, and the flip chart simply indicates which agenda item we're currently considering. We also just recognize that for a lot of folks, speaking in public can cause some anxiety and some nervousness, and so we do ask that there not be any boos, or cat calls, or applause, or other demonstrations, and that we maintain a civil, well, there might be a little applause, but that we normally maintain a civil discourse here in our chambers. So with that, we have a couple requests to speak under item 1A, and the first is by Hoda Niyad Samuel. Evening. There is a button to your right that if you press the bottom part, it will bring the podium to exactly whatever height you choose.
Okay, good evening. Okay, this matter is very confusing to everybody, including to the city. We own the shopping center, which is Riverbend Plaza, and there is a gymnasium. One of the rooms, we had a leak from, on the roof. We were going to fix the leak. However, the tenant who is no longer tenant now had told or informed the city that the leak is because there was quote-unquote "a bearing wall" that we had removed. Okay? So we have been talking to the city. We told them we did not remove any walls. There is no, there was no bearing wall whatsoever since 1960, when that building was built. They asked us to get a permit. When you get a permit, you get a permit for something that you want to build. But to get a permit to prove to you that something did not exist was very confusing. So we complied, we applied to get a permit, and to justify a permit, we relocated that air conditioning unit which was causing the leak. However, we dug into, the city plans were in 1976. I mean, I was born before that, but the city has had these plans. And we showed the head of the building department the plans that when that building was, it used to be the Social Security Office. And we showed them that exact room, it did not have a bearing wall, it did not have any wall in the middle. And he agreed with us. However, some confusion with the inspector who kept saying, "There was a wall, there was no wall."
No, the law enforcement.
The law, yeah.
Law enforcement, we talked to the man.
Sir, these meetings are televised, and so it's important that all the comments be at the microphone?
Yes, I want to, we talked to the man in here in the city. His name is Randall, R-A-N-D-A-L-L, Groodwin. He's AIA lead AB. I talked to him more than five times. I met him one time with my wife. My wife went to the city, and she wrote a memo by hand, and because the law enforcement, sorry, act as a structural engineer, and she wrote for citation, "I moved bearing wall." I had a hearing here, I told her, I swear to God, I didn't remove bearing wall, where we don't have a bearing wall, because the tenant, he don't like to be a rent. Okay? And after that.
I'm going to have to ask you to come to a close, because we have a three-minute time limit here.
One more thing.
I get.
Just a second. We also, to feel more comfortable and to assure the city and the law enforcement and whoever is interested in this, we hired a structural engineer who wrote a report and said that the ceiling is not supported by any wall whatsoever, it's supported by different beams.
All right, I'm going to have to bring it to a close.
Sorry, I'll not.
I'm sorry, the time has expired on this item, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Right next is Said Zarqani from Skylark Mobile Home Park.
My name is Said Zarqani. I run the Skylark Mobile Home Park on West Capital. I received a letter from code enforcement that they put a lien on my property. If I have objection, I should attend the meeting, that's why I'm here. I had problem with some tenant, I had to evict him, and we received a complaint from code enforcement. I contacted the officer, I explained the situation to her, and I said, "We fixed most of the problem. For some others, we have to wait for them to leave to do it," because we had to dig the apartment. And I asked the officer several times if, next time he goes over there, I appreciate that he informed me, so I can be there at her present to explain to her what did we do or what we will do. She went to that property three times, and we didn't know when she attended. I have three persons here that they testify, we fixed lots of problems, for instance, hole in the wall, as soon as she put that as part of citation, that we didn't fix it, which that was wrong, we complete the problem. They sent me a bill for about $1,000 for reinspection, which I think is very unfair and unjust. I tried to talk to them to readjust it, or they reconsidered the fine. They didn't, and they said, "I have to come here and ask for the city's help, that's why I'm here." I think I have enough explanation. If there's any question, I can answer. If not, I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you. All right, those are our only requests on item 1A. Let me turn to the city manager. Are code enforcement notices, are they including a provision, a suggestion, or notice that violations and fines should come directly to the city council?
I believe he may be referring to item 12 on your agenda, which is scheduled to be continued until the July 18th.
I see.
It is a public hearing on code enforcement liens, so I suspect, I don't know if there's, Larry? Is that what we're talking about? So it is appropriate for him to speak, but the appropriate time would be on that particular item, so.
And it's intended to be continued.
And it's intended to be continued.
All right, but we, okay, can we, so we will not be able to take any discussion or action on this item tonight, but just let me ask you, can we open the public hearing at the appropriate time under item 12, and at that time incorporate the comments that he's just made, so he doesn't have to make them again and come back later?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
If I be able to mention one more thing, they had a meeting without my presence because I had that in the family, I had to be in coma. I informed the supervisor in charge by phone, and after that, I sent a letter, I sent a register letter to them, to the code enforcement, that I'd like to have a hearing with the people in charge. I didn't get any response from that letter.
Okay, all right, thank you. So what's, just so you know, so what's going to happen is we will be taking up this item and others like it on July 18th, and we will not be required to return for the second hearing. We'll ask that the code enforcement unit and that the city manager bring back their response and analysis and any resolutions that may have occurred between now and then. So you, you don't need to stay for the remainder of this meeting, and that we're going to be deferring action on any of these issues until July 18th. And I would ask if, as we conclude this portion of the meeting, that Mr. Brooks or someone in the city manager's department connect with you so that we can get the appropriate follow-ups and make sure that you're familiar with everything that needs to happen, all right? Thank you. And I would note that Charlene Hamilton from the Community Development Department is speaking right now with Mr. and Mrs. Samuel, who just raised the prior issue about Riverbend, trying to resolve that matter as well. All right, so those are all of our requests under item 1A, so we'll proceed to item 1B, which is Council of Communications. Are there reports, are there communications this evening? Mr. Johannesen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Yolo County Housing Authority met on June 21st, and really, the only significant issue voted on was the budget, it's a balanced budget. But what was a little bit different, we, there was some discussion around how you account for depreciation and the wear and tear, and apparently, housing authorities don't do that. What they do is they try to embark in projects such as energy efficiency or things of that nature, and use that as a means to actually improve the project, but the federal government doesn't fund these projects beyond just routine maintenance. So apparently, there's billions and billions of dollars of deferred maintenance throughout the country on these housing projects. It was enlightening.
Mr. Kristof.
Yeah, LAFCO met a couple weeks ago on Tuesday, and anyway, really, the only thing of any consequence was the hiring of a new administrator. And the LAFCO commissioners endorsed her unanimously, and so we have a new commissioner. And they seem to be very pleased with the working arrangements that they have with the city of West Sacramento and the use of some employees for dual purposes. Seems to be working out very well so far, but just in the initial stages.
Can you tell us who the new director is?
No.
Okay. Mr. Ledesma?
Mayor Pratencieas. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just item to report on the Yolo County Transportation District met Monday night, so just two items to share with the council. One item is the ongoing issue that the district, the school district is faced with, and that is reducing or eliminating the bus service for the K schools throughout the community. So folks that are going to learn about that service being eliminated, the district has had conversations with them to see if there's any way at all possible to support or to at least try to find solutions to some of that, some of the issues that are going to be facing families in the very near future. And so those conversations are ongoing, and there's no, there are no solutions at the moment. It's a very complex, very expensive issue, but they're at least having conversations with Yolo Bus Service to see if there's anything that can be done. The other item that surfaced was, as a result of the Yolo Managers Group, there was some conversation in terms of how to support the Yolo County's attempt to become a self-help county, to fund transportation districts. So the Technical Advisory Committee, that's part of the Yolo Managers Group, which includes the Public Works Directors, I believe, if I got that correct, is going to explore ways to help the county become a self-help county and determine what methods or, yeah, what methods would be necessary for the county to fund their transportation priorities countywide. So those are the two items that were discussed that are significant. And that was it.
All right, I don't have an agency report, but I guess I have a one-by-one report from my discussions with Mayor Johnson over the last few days. Just the council's fully aware of how that issue has proceeded since Monday's announcement, written announcement, and then press conference, by Think Big around the proposal to work on bringing a major league baseball team to the region, and depending on whether you were looking at the written documents or at the press conference to the rail yards, there was, I know members of the council and a lot of folks in the community, Supervisor McGowan and me too, all of us were, responded quickly to the suggestion that there ought to be a stadium built at the rail yards to replace Reilly Field, and that we ought to bring in the A's to replace the Rivercats. And there's been extensive media coverage about the substance of it and the likelihood of, and the prospects of the A's or another professional baseball team coming here, so I won't go into any details about that. I will say that I've had at least a half a dozen conversations with Mayor Johnson since Monday morning, and who deeply regrets the way that all came forward, both in terms of the process and the communication, but also the substance. And so, just so the council and the community is aware, that there have been serious efforts to try to repair the diplomatic damage that was done Monday morning. Obviously, there have been much worse things that have happened in our relationship, but because the Rivercats and Reilly Field are such a central part of our community's history and pride, and our economy and the waterfront, that was an important one, and it was appropriate that we responded quickly. But I think it was well understood regionally and in the city of Sacramento and by Mayor Johnson as well, that that was not handled well, either in terms of the process or the outcome. And I think we're committed to trying to have a better relation, a more appropriate relationship into the future, and more productive ones. All right, so last, under Communications, I want to present a proclamation with the council's help, and I know there's at least one or two members of the city's staff team that are here as well this evening. And so we're going to present a proclamation honoring Toby Ross for his years of service to the city of West Sacramento. And this is a surprise, although I think he would, he's knowing, Mr. Ross, he's figured out that his wife and family and half the staff of the city being here is probably some indication that some move is afoot. If you might join me at the podium. All right, so this is a proclamation honoring Toby Ross for his years of service to the city of West Sacramento. Whereas Toby Ross is retiring following an illustrious career in public service, including serving 10 years as city manager of West Sacramento. Whereas prior to coming to West Sacramento, Toby served as the city manager of Park City, Utah, and as assistant city manager in the city of San Luis Obispo. And whereas Toby was born, raised, and schooled in California, including attending the University of California at Santa Barbara, where he received his PhD in geography. And whereas during his tenure in West Sacramento, Toby is credited with leading the city during both bountiful and tough economic times. And whereas, whatever the economic condition, Toby led with professionalism, accomplishment, and compassion. And whereas, under Toby's leadership, the city saw the furtherance of the development of the city's downtown and the riverfront, providing initial vision of what could be possible. And whereas, specific accomplishments include the building of a recreation center, a community center, the Cal Stars Building, and the infrastructure for the Bridge District, just to name a few. And whereas, Toby promoted teamwork and partnerships both within the organization and with other public partners, leading to agreements for community amenities with the Los Rios Community College District, the County of Yolo, and the Washington Unified School District. And whereas, with Toby's guidance and leadership, the city embarked on a substantial flood protection program that, when completed, will ensure the safety of residents of West Sacramento for years to come. And whereas, while Toby is known for his ability to get a job done, he's equally known for his love of trees, flowers, and greenery. I should note, he does not have a love of garden gnomes, I've learned. Understanding the value of natural beauty to a community. And whereas, where there are lush landscapes and patches of flowers, or simply ground cover in an area where none existed, Toby Ross likely had a hand in it. And whereas, while Toby is an unassuming and modest man, and typically shies from taking credit for his accomplishments, he has been a strong leader and mentor in the organization, having developed and nurtured many an employee who benefited greatly from their time with him. Now therefore, the mayor of the city of West Sacramento does hereby recognize and honor Toby Ross for all that he has done for the city of West Sacramento, and wishes he and his wife, Jo, long and happy, healthy, productive retirement. Signed by all five members of the city council. Mr. Ross.
Thank you so much. I really, really do appreciate this, and I thank the council. This will never replace the resolution you gave me earlier at the Leadership Forum. That one's framed in a much more prominent place. But this is exceedingly nice, and I thank you very much. And I, the credit for all of these goes to the outstanding staff and the wonderful elected officials that we've had in West Sacramento. So thank you.
Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you. And Toby, just wanted to say thank you for all your leadership, and having been here for just under two years, it's become very apparent, your leadership to this community and to this staff. And I just want to say thank you personally for being such a supporting figure for me and getting on board into this council. And it's been great to, you know, befriend you and Jo, and see, so invigorating to this community, so thank you. And you have a couple more days, so I'll call you a couple more times and make sure I bug you until I can't. So thank you.
Mr. Johannesen?
Yeah, I know you're not out of here yet, so, yeah, I just, you know, this is a good public forum to really acknowledge your contribution to West Sacramento. And, you know, I personally too have received a lot of benefit from some of your background experience, particularly in dealing with some of the thorny political issues and the thorny, just plain city management issues. And just to have someone that, you know, you can bounce ideas off of and not, you know. Having patience with the people that don't really have the experience has been really a strong attribute of yours, and so I really appreciate that. And, you know, of course, we're going to see you and Jo around, and I tell you, I'm jealous. I'm jealous of your travels, but we'll see you around.
Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, Toby, you've been just a dynamic and super city manager. I've had the privilege of serving with other city managers, and you just do a great job. You've really mentored the staff, and you've educated them, and you've brought them along. And I know that there's been some very, very difficult decisions along the way, but you've made West Sacramento really a better place to live, work, and play. And that's part of our mantra, is what we want to do. And for that, you deserve really a whole lot of credit. And I certainly appreciate the Tuesday meetings and the things to go over, various issues and things like that, because you've certainly helped educate me, and I just think the city of West Sacramento really is a better place because you've touched us. And thank you very much.
Pratencieas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And also, to echo my colleagues, Toby, you really have, you know, mastered the capacity to really mentor all of us. And I think you have served as such a calming figure when we oftentimes want to jump to conclusions or go in a direction that you may not agree professionally. And I think what's most important, and you illustrated, and you walked this walk every day, was your willingness to tell us what we didn't always want to hear, because you felt the importance to provide us your professional opinion, which is exactly what you're supposed to do. But it's not easy to do that, and I think I want to certainly thank you, I can't thank you enough, for your guidance and your honesty and your thoughtful sort of analysis of very complex issues in our community, where you provided us, you know, good guidance, good advice, you know, and a very thoughtful consideration of what the effects of our decisions will be in our community, and in a very deep, deep way. And I also want to thank Jo, because I know that I spent a lot of times, I mean, many of us have daytime jobs, so we don't have the ability to call you during the day, but I spend a lot of times calling you in the evenings, on the weekends, and, you know, been in your ear on certain issues, or mostly, mostly it's getting your advice on how to proceed with certain issues. And I know that takes time from your family, and so I want to thank Jo for your willingness to put up with me calling you at all crazy hours of the day and looking for guidance on the major issues facing our community. So thank you very much for your 10 years here.
Yeah, this is going to be tough. I mean, we have a great new city manager, we're all excited, and I'm already not at all put off by our show of absolute affection for Toby. And Toby came to us from Park City, because the skiing's better here, I guess. And because he wanted to take on new challenges and tackle things, life in Park City is not hard. And he wasn't, he was beloved there as well, and throughout the state there. But he wanted to work in a place where he could make a real difference in ways that he hadn't had the opportunity to do before. And boy, has he. You can't go around, you can't go five feet in the city and not see something that's different and better because of Toby. Yeah, our job is to work on vision and to set aspirations and to capture the community's values, and to push and cajole and hold accountable and budget, but in the end of the day, it has to get implemented, it has to get executed. And with a tiny staff, hardly any resources, juggling 100 different world-changing projects all at once, that's, should be impossible. What has been accomplished in the last decade should never have happened, and Toby Ross made it possible. And it has been astonishing to me to watch somebody so quiet, so modest, be able to accomplish so much by inspiring people, not by flowery speeches, you know, not by anything other than sheer competence and knowledge and belief in others and in their development and in their own potential, and trusting in them, and they taking that and running with it, and knowing that if something goes wrong or if they get lost, that Toby can help them, but that he also has the utmost confidence in their ability to grow and to experiment and to take risks, and that the city will support them. And it has just produced amazing, amazing results. And I've watched many people in this room, many of the staff in this room, who I know have lived that, you know, who had the opportunity, Toby put them in front of the council on some big gigantic item that they didn't even know anything about a month earlier, or in a negotiation, or on a tough project, and they delivered because they, he supported them and believed in them and backed them up, and gave them the tools to succeed, and it's just been incredible. So I'm, I mean, I've, I can't imagine this city without what Toby has accomplished and contributed as a leader, as a manager, as a man. And I want to echo the kudos to Jo, because without Jo, I think most people in the community, and certainly many of us would think Toby was just a robot. Jo provides some humanity to someone who's otherwise so stoic. And Jo's energy, her vivacity in the community, and her commitment as well to the health and the spirit of West Sacramento has been extraordinary, and what a terrific team. And so, thank you, thank you both. We will, you know, I know we have a ceremony on Friday night as well, a little celebration and party, but this is the evening, this is our official evening together, and just on behalf of everyone in the community, the business owners, the residents, the staff, the visitors, thank you for everything that you have done. You have made a huge difference for so many people. All right, so next, we're going to move on to item two, which is a presentation from County Librarian Patty Wong on the state of library services in West Sacramento. Welcome.
Thank you.
Can I lower it with that button on the right there, Patty? I know, I had to say that.
I'm not that geographic.
I'm not that teographically challenged, though, but thank you. Good evening, Mayor Cobaldon, Mayor Protem Viegas, and esteemed council members. On behalf of the county, and actually the library, I'm going to give you a state of the library as we know it now, but we can't do that without actually turning to our colleague here, and thanking him for all of his support. We wouldn't have been able to build this beautiful library without you, and your leadership, and that of your colleague, Carol Richardson, have made, and actually all of the staff. I don't think there's one department that we didn't work with, in terms of making this happen. And thanks to you and your leadership, but a special thank you to you. There is something that I think, you know, you said so eloquently just a little while ago, that you had a wonderful staff, and that is very, very true. I can't imagine working without a better team to build this library than the staff that we have here. But it takes a great leadership to make that happen, and so, thank you. I wanted to give you a little bit, I want to introduce my colleague, Rachel Wolf, who is our branch manager here at the Arthur F. Turner Community Library in West Sacramento. And I wanted to give you a little bit, we haven't been before you, actually, to talk about how the library's been doing. And it's been two years now, and I have wonderful news to report, and a little bit better, I think, hopefully than, and I hope it continues to be better and better all the time. We couldn't have done all of this, and one of the things that I wanted to mention, and I know that we don't always have rivals out there, but the numbers I'm about to share with you rival that of the city of Davis. And I want to make that clear, because, not because there's an automatic sense of, that Davis is on top all the time, but I have to tell you that this community really loves its library. And it's thanks to you, and your emphasis on literacy, and families, and people who have a great need for information. You're interested in bringing technology to people who don't have technology. That all makes a difference. So, while I don't have this wonderful PowerPoint to share with you, I wish we did, but I wasn't as prepared as I normally am. I wanted to share a little bit of the numbers with you. Over the last two years, we have circulated more than 500,000 items out of that building. We have answered more than 80,000 questions. Last year alone, more than 222,000 people walked through those doors. And I'll give you a comparison, in Davis, last year, we had 298,000 people. So, I can tell you, this is a, this is a beautiful building and a beautiful facility that's really well-used. We had a number of wonderful programs, and Rachel will be talking a little bit about the human side of everything. We have more than 31,000 cardholders that call West Sacramento home. When you do the math, that's almost every person at West Sacramento. I mean, albeit, we're registering babies, and we're getting the word out there. But I wanted to let you know, because it's not, I wanted to give you a sense of what it's like on an everyday basis. And I know a number of you actually come into the building on a fairly frequent basis, so you know, sometimes we, the staff, don't always remember to say the "hey" when they see you, but they're all helping people. And it's made a big difference in people's lives. The library has really been a strong anchor for service in that complex. We've got an established relationship and a partnership with you, with Los Reals Community College, and above all, I think, with our entire community. There's not a day that comes, that goes by when we don't have a person come to us with an idea for a service, or something that they want to contribute. Our friends have been extraordinarily beneficial to you, and you've been all influential in their development. And I'll just give you a shout-out, because one of the wonderful reasons why we have that little place in the front with the Friends of the Library, is to market not only their services, but to raise money for programs all the time. And they raise more money in that one little alcove than they do in a, in a book sale in one month. They raise about $1,000 a month. So, I can tell you that it's made a big difference in everyone's life. I wanted to also give you a context. In 2009, before we built the building, we were lucky if we had 100,000 people walking through that door. So, now we have, in the space of two years, half a million people walking through. So, I wanted to actually just paint that picture for you, telling you how much of difference that you make for all of us. And it's not just for the, actually, the residents of West Sacramento. The Arthur F. Turner Community Library in West Sacramento is a jewel in the entire Yolo County library system. And it's a resource for everyone that you have made possible, because of your generosity, but because of your vision, because you've wanted to make a difference in the lives of our community. So, I wanted to, we wanted to do something a little bit different on an everyday basis. We can put a plaque up there, and we can, we can cite your names, but what we wanted to do also, and you have a little copy of that in front of you, we've made these gold seals, and they are going to be going into every book, more material that we purchase, because part of the reason we want to acknowledge you is, you actually have created an investment in the Yolo County Library, and in your library. And we want to make sure that everyone knows that they own this library. This is their library, and they should be proud of it. We also wanted to make sure that people knew that, in addition to the books and materials that you provide, you also provide a very deep support of our programs and services. So, thank you. I can answer any questions, or I can have my colleague, Rachel, begin.
And were you going to make an additional presentation? Was Rachel going to, or?
Rachel's going to be talking more about the human side of things.
Okay, why don't we do that first?
Okay.
And then, if there's questions.
I just wanted to take a quick minute to introduce all of the members of the staff at the building, because we certainly couldn't get what we done, couldn't get done what we do without all of them. I'm just going to name them quickly. Lana Harmon, Carly Brotherton, Laura Smith, Tom Brinkus, Margaret Kaplan, Leah Teis, Linda Wiesner, Sean Garcia, Barbara Daly, Jenny Viskrubova, Maria Alvarez, Ann Hamilton, Nathan Brumley, Magda Padilla, and Cole Johnson. And I want to share just one story with you about the human side of the library. Patty gave you great numbers, and something that we're really proud of, thanks to the generous support of the local Rotary Group, and a West Sacramento resident. For the past two years, we've been able to bring every second grader in the Washington Unified School District to the library for a field trip. And they've gotten their first library card, learned about the library, checked out a book that they got to take home. And the best part of the story is those kids have become regular library users. And it's so special. You see the smiles on those kids' faces, and they are just so excited, and so happy to be in the library and to take that book home. So, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
I wanted to let you know, even though Rachel named, maybe about 12, 15 people, those are not all full-time staffers, so I wanted to kind of let you know, that we actually only have a total of about nine FTE in that building, to provide all of the hours that you see. So, I didn't want to mislead you in any way, yeah.
Mr. Johansson.
Patty, just a quick question. You know, one of the things about West Sacramento is we have a number of different languages spoken here.
Yes.
In one of the attractions of a library such as this in West Sacramento, is the English is a second language, and the non-English library, can you, out of the statistics you gave, can you kind of, what is the proportion of people coming in to seek, to seek the non-English language books?
We believe it's probably about 50% of the community members that are coming in on a daily basis are looking for either resources or languages, support in multiple languages other than English. We offer a couple of services. We have an English language conversation course. It's actually very spontaneous, actually. We have volunteers in the community who are English proficient, who actually invite community members to come in just to converse, to practice. We carry materials in at least six different languages that we have in the library there. We also have Storytime available in, in English, in Spanish, and in Russian. So, I don't know if that gives you?
It does, yeah, very good, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. If there's any other ways that you can think of for us to improve that service, please let us know, because one of the things that, we have a box out there, and we ask for donations. Actually, some of our staff, actually, I would say, not some of our staff, all of our staff that are purchasing in multiple languages are using community members to help select materials also. So, it's, that's a big part of, of how we stay connected with, with our community.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you, Patty, for the presentation, and give us an update. As the first, I kind of heard some of those numbers, about what we're, who we're attracting, how many we're attracting, how much traffic comes through, so, thank you. And your timing was impeccable, because just, two days ago, my neighbor came across the street, and I thought it was the typical complaint I might get, but actually, he came to absolutely rave about our library. He says, "It's a great library, one of the best public libraries he's ever been to." I'm not kidding, that's, he came to me Monday night and told me that, so. So, you're getting good feedback in the community as well, so thank you.
Mayor Protem Viegas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Patty, and thank you, Rachel. I think you guys exemplify exactly what this community envisioned when it dedicated funding to support the library with two measures J and K, and I know you talk about that a lot, in terms of how important, critical that dedicated funding is to keep the programming alive, and all of the good things that you do. But I wanted to just take a moment to thank you two, because, as Toby said earlier, it is about the staff, and you guys have managed to put together a team in there that makes that library exactly what we envisioned years ago, when there was all this consideration about what our future library needed to be, and you guys really made it a special place. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you. Good leadership here. Good leadership. I do have to tell you that we were cut $500,000 at the county level for the library alone. We made the judicious decision, actually, to take a look at how all of the city libraries were funded. And actually, the West Sacramento, thanks to your wonderful support, we're not going to have to cut any services here. I will have to cut services elsewhere. But, you know, the investment from the community comes from your leadership, and I thank you and applaud you for that. And $500,000 is almost 10% of my budget, so it's a pretty tough number to come up with. But we will, we will weather all of the storm together, but thank you again for your leadership in investing and reinvesting in your community, because that's really what it is. So, thank you.
Mr. Kristof.
Just very briefly, Pat, I'd really like to thank you for your presentation tonight, and for all of the work both of you do, as far as educating your staff, and giving the enthusiasm that you guys show when we, as customers, come in. I mean, we travel up to the state of Washington and Seattle quite a bit, and it's really nice to come in and grab one of those books, and so like, you can pop it into the car, and as you're driving, it just makes time go a lot faster. But, so I really just want to thank you and your staff for all that you do, and the library has been a tremendous asset for, gosh, as long as I can possibly remember. And you guys have made it better, and that's nice.
Katie Viegas and I were talking about the other day, and she said, "You know, I wrote a paper about the library in 1999," and I said, "Well, what did it say?" And she said, "We had three computers back then, and now we have 30." So, it's really made a big difference, so thank you. And I'm glad you're, I'm glad you're all users.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
We're so proud of it. I mean, having, spent a lot of time in the old library, which was, was well-used for what facility we had, and you could, this is the library that does justice to what was in the hearts of everybody that slog through the old building all those years, and it's really heartwarming to see. For a lot of folks who come to visit West Sacramento, and they see the change in the physical infrastructure of the city, "Oh, the roads are great, the parks are wonderful, the river cats is amazing." It's, but you can't see the change in the humanity of the place, and the opportunities, and the education, and the resources that are available like this. So, it's really, I really, I join my colleagues in thanking you for, for the update. We see it all the time, and the life that the library's contributing throughout the community, but it's good to, good to hear the numbers and hear the human stories from you directly. So, thanks so much for being with us tonight.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to then, the consent agenda, which is items three through 10. Are there items on consent that any member of the council wishes to remove, or any item for a separate question or comment? We're going to need to note, under item nine, that we would be making the recommended, item nine comes without a specific recommendation, and so in item nine, the recommendation will be that we select the firm of Myers-Navey as the special counsel pursuant to the closed action, closed session item that we already reported. Are there other items for, to poll, or for separate question or comment?
Just a, just a.
Oh, he doesn't want to, okay. Mr. Kristof?
Really, just sort of a question. It's a question on number five. And when will the report come back, as far as police lieutenants, police captain issue? When do we think that that is coming back? Two months, Phil, three months, a year?
Excuse me, I, we don't have any current plan to bring it back immediately.
Okay.
I would say more likely, three months.
No, no problem. Okay, thank you.
And then, I actually had questions on six, eight, and nine, but we have requests for public comment on item six, which is consideration of community development block grant loan agreement between the city and Bobby Chow for Denny's Restaurant. Chow?
Good evening. I just wanted to appear before the city council and show my gratitude and appreciation for the, the undying support for this project. In attendance, I have a few of my Denny's team members, been with me for years and years, and I know that this is something that's really important to me and them, and I just want to, once again, thank Mr. Cobaldon, I know that you've personally supported this, and the entire city council. I've been in the community for almost 10 years, and I look forward to a long and fruitful relationship. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, this has been a long slog.
It's gone.
For no other reason than this, than our friends at the state of California, but we thank them for, for sort of coming around to making this work. Eventually, kind of halfway. Okay, item eight, a question, which is consideration of approval of amendment number two to the contract for professional services with Corolla Engineers for the Bridge District Water Storage Facility and Park Project. So, this obviously, the, the item is fairly not a script, but the issues that are underneath it are clearly troubling, and it's clear from the staff report that they're, they're troubling to our team as well, around the performance of one of the contractors. So, the project, the project savings at 278 is enough to cover both the amendment that we, the overage that we already approved, plus this overage?
It's enough to cover the amendment that we're proposing tonight.
And how did we, did we just, when we did amendment number one, which was $113,000?
That was, in my understanding, it was paid for out of the funding that was approved by the project authorization, when it came before you, I believe it was in November timeframe.
Okay. So, the, the value engineering savings, sometimes value engineering is code for, we're taking stuff out of the project, that we, that someone is determined to be low-value? What, what is that?
Exactly.
What are the proposed changes?
The two items that the contractor proposed, and that we accepted, was, one, a different structural design to the actual metal plates that were being used, or designed for the erection of the 3 million, 3 million gallon tank, and we also determined that we can shorten the piles that were placed into the ground.
Okay.
That gave us the savings.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then, oh, no, I'm sorry, we already ended up with number nine, that's it. All right. So, are there any other questions on consent? Is there a motion? Moved by Mayor Protem Viegas, and seconded by Mr. Ledesma, with that specific notation on item nine. All those who favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, or any none, that motion carries. Item 11 is a public hearing in consideration of resolution 12-24, certifying inclusion of delinquent charges and penalties for water, sewer, and refuse services on the secured tax rule, in the same manner as general taxes, and directing that a lien also be placed on the subject properties.
Good evening, mayor and the members of the city council. My name is Claire Connor, supervising accountant from the Finance Division of the Administrative Services Department. Our division manages the financial part of the utility services. Like all services providers, we have customer with delinquent accounts. At the end of each fiscal year, we rely on the annual transfer of the delinquent amounts to the property tax bill for collection. The legal process to make this transfer begin at the end of June by mailing a notice to all customers that have a delinquent. to all customers that have a delinquent May balance of at least $100. These notices encourages property owners to pay their utility charges or contact, or contact us if they have any questions or comments. The final step is to hold this public hearing to request council approval for transferring these delinquent accounts to the property tax rolls. According to the two-years comparison table provided in the agenda report, um, the numbers of account, delinquent accounts and the total delinquent amount were both slightly increased from last year. Since the delinquent letter was sent, um, we have been receiving payments constantly. The total delinquent amount of today has been further reduced to 951,000, which is about 118,000, uh, received in a month of time. Um, we will continue accepting payments through July 31st, and the final list will be generated in early August. Staff in finance division will ensure the final delinquent list submitted to the county is prepared in the most accurate and professional manner. With that, I would like to return this item back to you for a public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions before we open the public hearing? Mr. Johansson?
Yeah, Claire, do we have any idea the number of these that are in foreclosure situations, or just, uh, non-payment? Is there a way to, do you collect that information?
We, we do. We mark our, in the system, if, if we're aware of, uh, foreclosure situation, and if we know the own, the bank own, and we put the bank information as a property owners.
Out of, out of the 41 pages of, of this list, do you know approximately, is, do you have an idea what the percentage would be of bank-owned properties?
I'm not sure I can provide that information right now, but I could. Uh, Linda? Well, she does have a list with owner.
Well, yeah, it's probably not. I mean, uh, right now, it's, I just wanted to kind of get a feel if it is because of, um, you know, there's a couple reasons why, a number of reasons why this would happen. One would be that people just walk away from their homes and, and leave the lien attached. The other would be that they're experiencing hard financial times before the foreclosure.
Just a very quick glance, we can get you the exact number. It looks like it's probably less than 10%.
Less than 10%.
Okay, well, that's, that's really all I needed. Thanks.
Then with that, we're going to open the public hearing on item 11. We don't have any requests to speak, but because it is a legal public hearing, does anyone wish to address the council on item 11? Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing, return it to the council.
I have a question.
Mr. Kristof?
Hi, Claire. Um, since redevelopment agencies have been dissolved, and if these, if these debts go on the tax roll, is there a way, because the state of California in the, I believe, in the near future, is going to try to hold all payments from Yolo County to the various entities that had redevelopment agencies. Is there a way to differentiate and to, and to, uh, make sure that these kinds of payments that do go on to the secured tax rolls go to that, go to, go to that city or that redevelopment agency area?
You'll get that, sir.
Well, I, it may be a smart aleck answer, but I don't think there's any way we can control what the state of California is going to do with, um, the property taxes, and, uh, once we put them on the roll, I mean, I, I don't think they have a legal basis, and taking that, I would defer to our city attorney, but that doesn't mean that they won't find a way.
Uh, no, I, I, I think, um, these are all teeter, under the teeter plan, which means that you're going to get your money next year with your tax payments.
Right.
So, it's a relatively short window for the state to take the money. Doesn't mean they wouldn't try to do something between now and next, uh, January, when your next tax payments would come in. But, but I don't think these are likely to be taxes that would be reached, um, famous last words.
Because, I mean, I know that, that there's the potential for sales tax to be withheld, and, you know, I mean, that seems to be against everything that we've always held right. Uh, and anyone, and I was just wondering if these could fall into that bailiwick, so to speak, and not, um, be forthcoming to our coffers, because that's a million dollars.
Right. I think that what may happen is if there's a shortfall, in the sense that they say we got money that we shouldn't have gotten, and they're going to get it back, they would take it from the property tax, and it would be a little bit difficult to articulate which dollar they were taking. We would just get less money. And this, these, these teetered, um, obligations would come to us as, as property tax. So, I, I think your concern is, uh, there's some foundation behind your concern, but I don't think there's anything we can do that segregates this and still takes advantage of the, um, means of putting it on the roll and getting our money as property tax. So, I think, once we've decided to do that, um, then we put it at the same risk as all the rest of our property tax.
All right. Okay.
Well, and, I mean, but more fundamentally, I mean, the, the amount of money that the state could attempt to divert, I mean, has to be limited to the amount that they believe that we owe for some other thing, right? And so, unless they, unless they believe, you know, unless they're going to make a claim that they are entitled to 100% of our property tax revenue, then this, I mean, adding, I mean, if, if they, if they are trying to divert a half a million, and our property tax revenues are 15 million, making our property tax revenue 16 million doesn't make any difference whatsoever.
It's still.
Because it's, it's still less than the, than, than the base number. So, I don't, I don't, I, I see the issue, but I don't think it's, I don't think it actually turns out to be a real threat, just mathematically. So, all right, uh, any other questions or comments on item 11? And is there a motion? All right, Mr. Ledesma is second. Moved, and Mr. Kristof is seconded, adoption of resolution 12 dash 24. Uh, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed, hearing done, that motion carries unanimously. Item 12 is a public hearing in consideration of resolution 12 dash 30, certifying the list of code enforcement charges directing that a lien be placed on the subject properties and requesting inclusion of these charges on the secured tax roll in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes. I'm going to open the public hearing, uh, for the purpose of incorporating the comments that were placed in the record under item 1A by, uh, by Mr. Zarcony, uh, and then continue the public hearing until July 18th without objection. All right. Item 13 is continuation of a community development block grant public.
Mr. Mayor, did you need for me to read into the record our request to continue the item and accept any other comments from the, the public? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item 13 is continuation of a community development block grant public hearing to consider guidelines for the micro enterprise technical assistance program. Ms. Collins?
Good evening. Uh, we're here this evening to ask that the city council, um, receive, conduct a CDBG public hearing to receive public comments on, um, draft micro enterprise technical assistance program guidelines, and, um, and then recommend that the city council, uh, adopt the guidelines. And also, we'd like to add one additional item to the recommendation, uh, if it pleased the council, and that is to authorize the city manager to execute a contract with opening doors for $35,000 for, um, for the administration of this program. Um, we are still waiting on approval from the state of California on our guidelines, but we'd already continued this public hearing once, and we really need to get it underway, the program underway as soon as we get HCD approval. Um, so, we're kind of, um, putting, unfortunately, in a position of putting the cart before the horse here. Um, the micro enterprise program will provide business counseling and financial counseling to low-income persons who either own a business with five or fewer employer employees, or that are interested in starting one. Um, the guidelines are pretty much a template. They just basically say how we're going to determine whether people are income-eligible, uh, except for three discretionary items. And one of those is whether we should require people to be residents of West Sacramento. Um, we are recommending that, that we, on a case-by-case basis, be allowed to, um, review applications from people who, um, live in unincorporated Yolo County, um, and either operate a business in West Sacramento or are interested in starting one here. Um, secondly, uh, we are asking, on a case-by-case basis, to allow people who are West Sacramento residents and are interested in starting a business that is within Yolo County, um, and no more than five miles from the city, um, borders. The reason for that small distance is basically because, um, state requires that we be able to show that there is an economic impact on West Sacramento. So, we, we couldn't do, you know, a business in Espardo might be a little difficult to, um, to say was affecting us. Um, so, they required us to put some kind of limit on that. And third are our requirements for technical assistance, um, the fact that they have to have at least seven years of experience, which, um, the technical assistance provider that staff is recommending for selection has, uh, been in the area for a long time, and has been providing assistance to, um, mainly immigrant communities. They've done a lot of work in West Sacramento with both our Hispanic and our Russian, um, communities. Uh, so, they are very highly qualified, uh, along with their subcontractor, who is the Small Business Development Center. That, oh, that, there was, um, a meeting of the Economic Development Advisory Commission, and they have a recommended adoption. Uh, they did have a couple of comments, though. They were a little bit concerned about supporting, of providing assistance to people from outside of West Sacramento, so they, um, they did think that we should at least consider, um, making it on a space-available basis, that West Sacramento residents would be taken first and then space-available. Um, one reason why we're recommending that we be more lenient is that this is a new program, it's a pilot program. We don't know for sure, you know, if we can fill all the seats in this first round, and, um, the grant will be expiring at the end of the first year of the program, so we want to make sure that we spend all that money and we get everyone served, that we have room for. So, that's the end of my presentation.
All right. Mr. Kristof?
Yeah, anyway, so, what's Opening Doors?
Opening Doors is a nonprofit in Sacramento. They have been doing, um, both financial, uh, business finance for small business owners for refugees, persons who have received refugee status, coming from primarily Central America and, and Eastern Bloc countries for a number of years. Uh, they've been doing a micro loan program for those that's actually funded by, um, I guess it would be, not, you know, IRS, uh, ICE now, it's funded by the Immigration Service. They just got a grant to become a S, uh, Small Business Administration, an SBA micro enterprise lender. This is a brand-new program by the SBA. So, um, folks that go through our training, the hope is that we, what, our, our plan is to focus on these small business owners who need additional capital and aren't bank-ready. They cannot get a bank loan. They need, they need financial counseling, they need to clean up personal credit, they need to establish a, a strong business plan, you know, those sort of things. And our hope is that when they go through our program for the training, that then they can either apply to Opening Doors itself for an SBA loan, or hopefully even a, a bank loan. Um, so, that, that's their history, and they're going to partner with the Small Business Development Center for those folks that don't need a whole lot of hand-holding, uh, that, that, um, they can move those folks into the Small Business Development Center for their regular, um, business counseling and, um, training programs. Opening Doors, though, has counselors that speak Russian, that speak, um, Spanish, that speak several Asian languages, and so, they're, they're going to try and focus on our immigrant families, primarily.
So, this half-a-million-dollar grant, really, it doesn't go towards the education of the potential business owner, or the loan to the potential business owner, because we are going to educate them, and then they're going to go to Opening Doors and these very, other various organizations to, um...
I, I don't think my staff report was clear then. No, the, the majority of this grant is for our regular business loan program, just like, um, the one, the loan to Mr. Chow earlier this evening. Um, however, in the grant application, we asked to set aside $35,000 for micro enterprise business counseling. So, the, the program this evening we're talking about is only that little set aside of 35,000.
Okay. Thank you. That clears it up.
Mr. Johansson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, now, now, this, uh, it's, we're talking about $35,000 for technical assistance work. Um, why, why do we have to spend it? I mean, I, I'm kind of concerned that the EDAC, you know, they had a concern too about, you know, who are we trying to serve here? And I think your comment was that we need to open it up so we can spend the money. Um, you know, one of the things I would look at is, I, I think we talked about this the first time you came up, is, you know, what is this supposed to do, and how do we know if it's working? I know it's, from what you're, you're saying, it fully funds our staff, so, um, we're not putting any other city resources into this program because it's going to this, um, separate group that's providing this service, and there's no other staff at the time that's going to be spent on this. And so, it's, we're a little, I would, I would be a little less sensitive than to serve maybe people on the peripheral of, of West Sacramento, but I just get a little concerned that, um, the, the thought is to try and spend the money, if, if at all possible, rather than, you know, if you don't need to spend it, why spend it? Um, is there a reason why you need to spend it?
Well, if there are, if, remember that the requirement is if they don't live in West Sacramento, that, that they have a business here, or if they live here, that they have a business that's nearby that's providing some kind of economic benefit to West Sacramento residents. Um, an example that I can think of is I know, I've, I've always heard a lot of people saying, "Gosh, I wish there was a, a bike shop in West Sacramento," you know? If someone was going to do a little small bike repair, and they lived, um, in Espardo, but they're going to open their business in West Sacramento, we could say, you know, you, you could make a case that there is an economic benefit or a community development benefit to people of West Sacramento, that they're getting a service that was not available before. So, we're not just spending the money, but we, we would be spending the money provided it benefited West Sacramento residents.
Right, and, and I guess then the second part of that would be, um, you know, what is the purposes and how do you measure that? And, and, you know, what are we going to get for $35,000, in other words?
Yeah, that's a good question, and in our RFP, um, we did ask for performance measures, and so, we're going, we're going to ask our consultant to, um, provide quarterly reports that will say how many people they're serving, what those folks' income levels are, what their business status is. Are they, uh, just thinking about it? Are they involved in starting it up? Are they an ongoing business concern? Um, and then a quarterly report on what's the progress. And we've also put in there that if people aren't moving forward, that they need to be disenrolled, you know, people that aren't actively working towards something. Um, and at the end, we also want, um, an evaluation of the change in those folks, either their economic status, that they have improved their business so that they're making more money, or that they have improved their business, so they've hired on two extra people, so we've created some jobs. So, we absolutely are looking at that. Again, I mentioned before, this was a pilot program. There's no, um, requirement that we ever do it again if we find that it's not effective in West Sacramento, but it has been effective elsewhere. Similar programs have been effective elsewhere. And so, um, we're, we want to give it as good a try as possible, and that's why we would really like to fill all the seats this first time around.
Yeah, I just, you know, when you're doing the final analysis of actually the action that's taken based on this advice, uh, to quantify that. So, if you're spending 35,000, you're actually getting a net 40,000 or 50,000 dollar community benefit because of that, with, you know, for example, hiring employees, that kind of thing. I mean, that, that would make sense, because then it's basically, you're looking at investing, and you have a return on your investment.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, and I, and with, with, uh, with my colleagues, and I think with EDAC, um, I'm supportive of the item. I would... I'm supportive of the item. I would strive about all of the modifications, though. I actually don't agree with any of them. The, the definition of what a specific benefit to West Sacramento is is so gigantic that it's anything. Right? So yes, it could be a non-resident who's opening a business here, as long as that business provides needed job services or products to West Sacramento residents. Well, if they hire one person or sell anything, I mean, that's, that's, there's no, there's no filter there. And so it is wide open. And this five-mile limit for, is, is so restrictive, I mean, I could probably name right now the people that would be eligible. I mean, when I first read it, it looked like one of those, you know, one of those things that Congress writes that looks like it's supposed to be general, but it's all targeted to help, you know, Halliburton. And it has to be a company of this size, and it has to be headquartered here, and it has to have this many years of experience. And when you get down to it, it's all, oh, that's one person. That's what this feels like, like it's not actually opening to get up to anything, except for something very narrow. And if we, if, if we can't get West Sacramento residents to open West Sacramento businesses, then shame on us. I mean, that's, that's the purpose of this limited amount of funding. So I, personally, I think those two changes to the template aren't, aren't really necessary. And the impetus should be on us to make sure that we are, we're doing that. In the long run, I mean, there, you know, we want to develop the Clarksburg, Clarksburg Wine District. And so to me, the five-mile limit doesn't make sense. You know, I want to support the development of wine tourism and stuff like that. We're the gateway to Clarksburg. Going north, that doesn't make as much sense. But that's an actual economic strategy as opposed to just some random five-mile piece. And in this space, you're not going to open up a winery with a $35,000 microenterprise loan. That's not a microenterprise anyway. So I, I just don't see the value of, of that. And, and I think it distracts from what should be the focus, which is West Sacramento residents working on West Sacramento microenterprises. And then the seven-year requirement for technical assistance provider, that really jumps out at me because I don't see, I mean, yes, a technical assistance provider ought to have experience, but these kind of requirements seem like they're jury-rigged to select specific firms. And in fact, the description was, are the one that we want to pick or the one that we're recommending meets that requirement? But that's not, that's not a reason for the requirement. I mean, if, if there's another firm that has, you know, another provider that has five years of experience, there's no, there's no, there's no rationale here for why that would be categorically disqualifying. You know, why, why five years of helping people start microenterprise businesses is just not good enough? And if you, if you, until you get it hit to seven, then it's not, then, then you, then you're not even qualified to apply to be one of our providers. So it's those sorts of things that, you know, as we, as we look at like minority and women-owned and disadvantaged businesses or just anybody trying to, trying to break into starting a business or their own microenterprise, those kinds of rules really shut people out of the market. So I, I don't like them generally, but here, there's, there's really no justification for a seven-year minimum requirement when we're the ones making the selection anyway. So if somebody walks in and has seven years and somebody else has five, and we think seven's better than five, we could still pick them. But without, I don't see the need to legally say, don't bother even asking if you only have five or six years of experience managing or operating a small business. So to, in my mind, all three of those, I would just default back to the, to the HCD template and not make these changes that would allow, allow the money to be diverted outside of our, outside of our community.
Mayor Protem Viegas.
Thank you, Mayor. So Louise, how, how do you plan to, to market the services? What's the, what's the outreach goal?
Well, the, the plan for the marketing is, well, Opening Doors is, and the Small Business Development Center are already working with some folks in our area. So they want to use people that they've already worked with to try and get into communities that wouldn't normally hear about these sort of things or be, be, be open to this. But then we're, we're going to do, you know, all the standard things, of course, is going to be in the newspaper. We're going to put it on the city website. We're going to put it on the, the cable channel. But we're also going to do some outreach to various community organizations like the BB Can, like the, the Russian churches, the, the Hispanic churches. Because we, we want, we feel like if you're a longtime resident, English-speaking resident, a lot of these other normal outreach channels are probably adequate. But a lot of our immigrant communities, they're not as accessible to. So we're going to focus our outreach specifically on those communities.
Oh, that makes sense. All right. No, I, I think it's a great program. It has the potential to do some really good stuff. And I am curious to see what those quarterly reports are that you're going to be collecting already to see kind of what impact it has and whether or not it moved people sort of off a bubble that they were, I mean, obviously, there's some miscommunication or different, difference of opinions about whether or not there's any funds available through the banks. And obviously, the banks feel differently. So if you can bridge that gap, that would be wonderful. But curious to see how it works out.
Oh, and there's one other thing I forgot to mention. We are going to also use the business license for outreach.
I know, if there's not a question, if we could keep the, keep the council conversation going.
Mr. Ledesma.
Thank you. Thanks, Louise, for the briefing on this. And I agree with, with some of the comments regarding the the changes made to the template and that. I, I understand your point about, at some point, they just sort of weed people or try to target people unnecessarily or wave people out. But if there was some flexibility, we can retain in there because there might be somebody who's doing business in West, that wants to do business in West Sacramento in a valid way, or, you know, just they might have an impact in a way that we can't foresee. I'm thinking of like internet consult, you know, just the, the other things that impact come to our city. They want to do business here. You know, repair games, Xboxes. I see those businesses cropping up now. So again, those are things that people may be coming in for, not resident of the city, and they can do those types of things here. And it's just something I, I kind of want to, if we can maintain some flexibility with that, might be helpful. I do want to echo what Mayor Protem Viegas said about the outreach on this. It is important. I think it is. Don't discount the banks totally in their ability to help promote this program. Because I think, I know for sure that, that they, we are, as a member of a large bank, trying to reach some of these same audiences. We just don't have, have facility for certain types of lending. I know about the microloan program through the SBA, what they're trying to do. They're trying to bridge that gap and help, to help give these people the path, pathway to get into kind of a mainstream credit facility. So they are vitally important. So I think you have an opportunity here to really leverage them to make sure, financial institutions, they know about you because they may be talking to folks in communities and we just can't help them or their bank can't help them. But they want, they don't want us to leave them. They want to find them a resource that might be able to give them on the pathway. So there is opportunity there. And as well, talk to others in the professional community that, the Financial Services Committee, because I think they're in the same boat. They're trying to help. They're trying to do, to find pathways of financial literacy to these folks because they want to open their own business. And I think this is an important venue to have. So I think it's really important to kind of keep that outreach option open. Thank you.
And maybe a middle ground on the, the non-resident piece is a better definition of what we mean by a community benefit. So for example, I mean, we have, we have, we have, we have a, you know, a set of targeted industry clusters. We have a restaurant attraction objective. I mean, there are some areas where it's clear that there is an unmet need in the community. There are other areas where, you know, if somebody wants to open a liquor store and they live in Elk Grove, yeah, they're providing jobs and they're providing a needed product.
Right.
But that's not, we shouldn't be subsidizing that, I guess, from my, from my, from my perspective. We should be focusing our energies on, on helping West Sacramento and start businesses. But if there's, if they're meeting and identified something more specific than what we have in here.
Right.
Some way to, to say that, that is a real unmet need in the community. I would be more comfortable with it.
I would agree with that.
Well, personally, personally, I feel it should be for West Sacramentoans doing business in West Sacramento. I just think that, you know, having somebody from Sacramento or Citrus Heights or Roseville have an idea and want to bring it to West Sacramento, I just, I, I struggle with them receiving some of the grant money in order to make that work. I'd rather have, I would, personally, I'd rather have a West Sacramento and a West Sacramento connection. But I, I mean, I understand where you're going. And as long as the business is located here, maybe it could be that if the business is located here and they hire West Sacramentoans, that would be some, that would raise my comfort level.
Yeah, it's on a, it's on a rolling basis, right, this program? So you can't, you, we don't, I mean, the easiest way would be to say, exhaust all the money that you have on West Sacramento residents who apply for it, that are, that meet all the requirements before you do any non-residents. But, but the way that this works, that doesn't, you can't, you can't do that. You can't do that, at least in a global way.
May I offer a, a suggestion? We could remove the options. But if we find that we're not able to fill the classes, we could come back again to the council for consideration of changing the guidelines.
If you have a brief presentation.
And no comments from the council. Yes, does that work?
Yes, it works fine.
All right. There's, okay, there's comfort with that. All right. So that's the revised recommendation for adoption without, without the guideline revisions. Is there a motion then? Second. Moved by Mayor Protem Viegas and second by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed during the motion carries. Item 14 is a public hearing to consider Resolution 12-35 adopting a Neighborhood Stabilization Program III Program Income Reuse Plan.
As the council's aware, we have received a $2.6 million grant to purchase and rehab vacant and foreclosed homes in West Sacramento. And the plan before you, it governs the way the city can use money that's returned on that program. So when we purchase and rehab a home and resell it to a low-income home buyer, the money that comes back from that sale is enrolled back in. And basically, the Program Income Reuse Plan will restrict those funds to the same purposes as in the grant. So that's all the comments I have. Do you have any questions?
This is a public hearing. I don't see any items to speak on this. Nope, there are not. So are there any comments or questions from the council? No. All right. Not, we're looking for a motion. I'm sorry, we're going to open the public hearing. And we will close the public hearing. And now we're looking for a motion. All right, we have a motion in a second. Always in favor, signify by saying aye. With one absent, that item moves forward. Thank you very much. Moving on to item 15, which is a public hearing regarding the Resolution 12-36 for design review of the Rayleigh's Landing West Capitol Commons Project located at 300 West Capitol Avenue. Mr. Bermudez, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Viegas. Here tonight, staff is seeking a design review approval. This is for the Rayleigh's Landing West Capitol Commons Project. Just to go back real quick to why we're here in a design review format. Usually, it's an appeal, but in this case, it's because you guys requested for us to come back. When we approved the development agreements for the Rayleigh's Landing project, the Rayleigh's Landing, Landing project, which is located with, between Third and Fifth Streets and by Fourth Street, as well as West Capitol Avenue and G Streets. And part of that project consists of the Calstris Building as well. So when we brought those development agreements to the council in 2006, the council, and supported by the Planning Commission as well, requested that we bring back any future project for this area under a design review approval for city council. So since then, we've approved the Calstris Building. We've also approved the Fairfield Residential. Things have been kind of slow lately, but we did, we got a project here. This project consists of the old Washington Street project between Third and Fifth. But what is unique about this project and today's kind of the evolution of our progress and vision is we eventually abandoned West Capitol Avenue. So we have an opportunity with this project to capture development for that segment that is along TBG and the old West Capitol remnant. So this project is going to be broken up and consist of a Phase One, which would be courtyard buildings. These would be located on the, more of the ground level of Third and Fifth Street and G and West Cap. And then the Phase Two would be a TBG, what is in your staff report referred as a TBG building. For reference, the site plan is on Attachment Five. So we have this development for 350 multifamily units. Applicant is requesting roughly about 471 parking spaces. 477 is a requirement. They are also requesting some additional parking that is off-site parking that I'll get a little further into. So why I'm here is, this is a requirement to fulfill that obligation of the development agreement. This item was heard by the Planning Commission on June 26th. They forwarded on to the council. And overall, in general basis, they were, you know, supportive of the design. They did, you know, give staff some good recommendations regarding the, the parking concept as well as give some suggestions on the TBG building along Fourth Street. So since then, staff has met with the developer team. And we've been working on some solutions to the parking concerns that staff had as well as some of the standard specification issues that have kind of crossed our way dealing with fire access. So we've made progress. We feel that we got the, have the project, you know, in a good, enough shape. And we do have conditions to kind of fall back on if things kind of don't work out from some of the requests that are being made related to this project. In general, it's kind of the, the key kind of point to make, and I think, you know, it is something that we wanted to kind of check in with council is the off-street parking or off-site parking. You see noted on the plan, there's parallel parking on Fifth Street. Staff has worked with the development team to eliminate that, those parallel spaces along that T intersection at West Cap and Fifth. So those will be removed. But we are going to progress with parallel parking along Fifth Street. There is angled parking along G Street. And then another request that has recently been discussed with the applicant and their team is to allow parking on Third Street. And this would be in the fashion of restriping Third, removing a lane, and allowing an interim period to have parking on Third Street. We have, you know, since discussed that with our city's traffic team and the Planning Commission also, you know, weighed in on this. And they seem pretty receptive. Obviously, there's some coordination. There's some timing. There's some fallback of when do we reopen the lane. The development team is supportive of a condition that we could work out to fall back when volumes, you know, warrant that we open the lane back up. Another topic that we've been working on is the placement of a few parking spaces along Tower Bridge Gateway. As you see in the plan before you, Attachment Five, there is two spaces detailed there. The applicant and, and subsequent meetings, we have been talking about opening that up to maybe four or five spaces. Now, you know, we know that there's been, you know, recent improvements. We did confirm that the, you know, sidewalk would remain its integrity as far as the sizes of the sidewalk. But there would definitely be some street scape improvements that would have to be removed and to accommodate that parking. The applicant really believes that, you know, having that presence on TBG for parking even in the early phases kind of attracts people down to their sales office and gives them a feel of how the, the project and the flow of the project would work from TBG all the way down to Fourth Street and where their sales office will be located. So staff has been working with that, with the development team, feels that, you know, we're progressed far enough to kind of move forward. In conclusion, with the recommendation of the approval of design review, please understand that it would be for the Phase One and Phase Two of the project. As noted in the staff report, there's still some issues regarding infrastructure to be worked out regarding West Capitol and the Phase Two component of the project. As well as, obviously, the developer would have to engage the city on acquisition of that particular property. And at this point, we haven't even began discussion. So in closing, this approval is for the Phase One and Phase Two. And if things don't pan out with the Phase Two concept, the design review would run with that particular portion. And if another developer came in, they had the, the opportunity to piggyback on that particular design review approval and move forward. Lastly, the development team has a presentation. I sent out a packet. You should have that on your dais. I sent out a packet, you should have that on your dais, and they will do a quick presentation overview of more of the design details. One point I started to make on design review, the Planning Commission did speak to the design overall. They really were impressed with the design of the courtyard buildings and had some positive, you know, comments to say about the courtyard buildings as well as the TBG building. But one of the kind of key, I think, floating out there, I won't say issues, but it's been kind of, you know, one of the things staff's been kind of trying to work with too is such a long stretch of TBG. It's very monolithic. The Planning Commission noticed that. They really picked up on wanting to make sure that they called out that there'd be relief, there'd be some kind of separation, that we're just not looking at a straight wall coming down TBG. And I believe the architect in their presentation will, you know, provide more detail of, you know, capturing something a little bit different and that we're not going to be looking at a linear, monolithic wall going down TBG. So that concludes my presentation, and they'll be up. I can answer any questions at this time or wait till they conclude.
Your Anderson?
Yeah, just a quick, so phase one does not include Tower Bridge Gateway?
No.
Okay, and you said that if phase, we start with phase one back away from Tower Bridge Gateway, which leaves the property between Tower Bridge Gateway and the project. You said to another developer.
Meaning?
Okay, I just, I'm kind of.
Yeah, that, meaning that if, if we could not work out either infrastructure issues related to West Capitol Avenue, or if, you know, there, there isn't, you know, price terms for acquisition of West Capitol that we could work out with the current development team, that this approval would allow for, you know, another particular developer to come in and program this site accordingly to this particular design approval.
And that particular phase would be really what the public is going to see coming off Tower Bridge Gateway?
Correct.
All right, all right, that's it for now.
Jim, phase two is sort of the exciting part of this whole project. I mean, it's the part that has the commercial, has the retail. I mean, it seems like we're setting up ourselves to fail, because if these guys can't make it work with phase one, nobody is going to invest in phase two as their phase one because of the retail and the commercial and, and that kind of component. Because if I read this correctly, the only thing that is in phase one really is their office, and I really don't know what else.
Their office, recreation amenities.
Their recreation amenities, right. But I mean, it doesn't, it's not a, just for lack of a better word, it's not a corner beauty salon, or it's not a corner donut shop, it's not a corner Starbucks. It's, it's not any of those things that's in phase one. That transfers into phase two, and to me, it seems sort of backward that what staff's doing, because we as staff should be supplying the whole enchilada to them. We should, we should work out whatever issues are out there as far as PG&E, as far as Rayleigh's, as far as whoever has those phase two properties. We should be working, so we can package the whole thing. Then we can get everything that we need, I think. You know, I mean, that's, that's, that's what I think. I don't know what are, what the timeline will be for putting a whole project together. I'm excited about having a project, and it really sort of looks, I mean, I might make a few minor changes, you know, as far as like the Planning Commission did, or wants to, but, you know, it is sort of exciting. I really wish it was a for-sale project, but, you know, I mean, hey, the market's what the market is. But at the same time, I would like to see if we could put everything together so that we have a total project.
All right, so before we get too far into this, you want to move to the presentation by the project developer? Yeah, that's fine. Get everything on the table. Nethercutt, Mr. Mogavero, welcome.
Mayor Protem and Mayor Caldebran, it's great to be here. Can you hear me okay?
You can bring that up by pushing a little button and it'll come right up. Unless it's broken.
I broke it. It's an honor to be here. My name's Dan Nethercutt. I represent the Wolf Company, we're the applicant and, and principals in this, in this project. This is a challenging project, challenging piece of land in a, in a challenging economic environment. However, we were attracted to this site because of the good work that's been done on Tower Bridge. That's, that's why we're here. And what we have crafted, we came to this project a year ago and began the process with Toby and with staff by saying, we're interested in building this type of a project here. We're not interested in having an adversarial relationship with the city. What can we do together? And we started with a complete open mind. We understood that there's challenges with Tower Bridge, with the old Capitol Avenue land, and we've crafted methodologies so that we can build the project, so that we can have some stability in phase one and then phase two. If we could do both of them at the same time, we, we would, you know, our intention is to do both. The reality is there is an existing entitlement on the phase one land, and there's a lot of uncertainty in Capitol Avenue. I think that our involvement has advanced the issues on Old Capitol Avenue and has a plan that can be implemented, and what staff has said that whether it's by us or by somebody else, that's certainly possible. Hopefully, it is by us. But the choice is really to wait for years perhaps, or a long time, till you can stabilize the Capitol Ave-, or to move forward with what we have today. And the decision by, our willingness to invest in the process was based on staff support of, of a process that would break it up into phase one and phase two. So we've come to this point based on probably the, the best example of public interest and private capital that I've been involved in in thirty years of doing this. So I just wanted to say that. We have a presentation, and I'll turn it over to David Mogavero, the architect on, on the project, and then our staff, our development staff is here to answer questions. So we're very hopeful that we can help everybody understand what our intentions are and, and answer any questions that may come up. So with that, I'll turn the time over to David, and he'll be more interesting. He's got pretty pictures.
I have pretty pictures, but I don't know about the more interesting part, Dan. David Mogavero, Mogavero Nordstein Associates, Sacramento, California. And I want to reinforce what Dan has said, this is the best staff we've worked with just about anywhere lately. So you guys have done a good job picking, picking your folks and, and you're benefiting from it. This is a big project, there's a lot of aspects to it. I'm going to try to keep the presentation very brief and leave it to you to have questions, and, and we'll approach the dialogue that way. We started this project with a few goals in mind. First and foremost is to be simpatico with the intent and approach that the city has taken over the last ten to fifteen years in this district, and the city as a whole for that matter. And while there are not design guidelines for this specific piece of land, we've looked at all the design guidelines that, you know, speak to the intent of the city and done our best to be consistent with all of those design guidelines. And those include things like connecting with the neighborhood, peopling the streets, porches, courtyard entries that are off the main streets, and things like that that I'll get into more. Secondly, that this will be a very high-quality statement for West Sacramento. This is right on your main street, we understand that, and we want to make sure that everybody's proud of this, and I want to compliment Wolf Company for being very, very supportive of pushing this project along in a, in a positive manner. Very importantly, to emulate our notion about the aesthetics, is that we want to bring Midtown folks to West Sacramento. We've been asking ourselves that question over and over again. What do we need to do here to get the kind of population that is coming to Midtown Sacramento? Very important, we've done focus groups in the office around it with some of the residents that already live in Midtown Sacramento to explore some of the things that would be important to them. And then finally, responding to the community scale, and I will move into that with context. There's really sort of two sides to this project in a lot of ways. We have the one side that is adjacent to the Washington neighborhood, which is your old historic neighborhood with the smaller scale Victorian structures and things of that sort. Then we have the east side with the new large office buildings that are there that really relates to what's happening on the south, which is the ballpark in this sort of really large scale of Tower Bridge Gateway. So we have a twofer here as far as scale goes that we're trying to be responsive to. We have a grade change along Tower Bridge Gateway. It starts at the sidewalk being the same elevation as the, the elevation of the land on the site on the west, and going to the east, I should probably do my hands backwards, but I don't think I could think quite that quickly, so that you can see what I'm doing. But on, on the eastern end, there's about eleven-foot grade differential between the back of sidewalk and the street. So we really have a four-story building that becomes a three at the other end, but indeed, because of the mezzanine, which you can see is sort of the white volumes on your screen on top of the lower drawing, it's really a five-story building. Under the code, it's not a five-story building because they're mezzennines, but we have a fifth story that is being incorporated and a substantial portion of it. The other issue is the proximity of recreational assets like River Park and of course, the ballpark. And then finally, a serious issue for this site is the lack of street parking. It's been a real challenge to figure out how to make retail work here in particular. So the project, if we could go maybe to the next slide, or can I do that? I could do that. Okay. Thank you. And I'm going to jump one more still. I've already done context. So the project is three hundred and fifty dwelling units. Most of them are flats. We have twenty-two that are penthouses, that are big units that are intended to attract a, you know, probably more of a empty nester kind of tenant. It's forty-two units per acre on aggregate for the project as a whole. It is composed of two different prototypes, as Jim spoke to. One is the courtyard product that is on the north that has interspersed alleys with parking arrangements. And then on the south, we have a more monolithic building that fronts on Tower Bridge Gateway. We've built into the project a community hierarchy, and some of you are familiar with our work. We do that a lot, where we really look at the scale of community, focus on community of fifteen or twenty-five households, and then jump it up to fifty or sixty, and then up to the project as a whole, and all the time interfacing with the community and the surrounding neighborhood as well. There's retail at the western end. We actually have a mezzanine. The amount of retail square footage is slightly larger than what's shown in that plan because there's a mezzanine level on the backside of it. And because of the lack of parking on the east end, we ended up opting to go with a live-work kind of thing. We were the master planners for the Regis Homes project on C Street, and that was the prototype that we developed for Regis Homes there. We're looking at this as kind of a similar thing, handicap accessible, residential for a while if it needs to be, but setting up an opportunity to convert it to, to commercial in the long term, or hopefully, we end up with commercial right off the bat. We did a little project at Tenth and T in Midtown that we set up sort of a similar kind of manner, and we were really fortunate to discover that we had a retail tenant right off the bat there. It's also set up so that those retail, those live-work spaces can be combined into one larger retail space if Wolf Company elects to do so in the future. So we've set the retail areas up for transition. Just scroll it, right? Oh, there we go. Okay. So I'm going to move in a little bit closer. This is a, a computer view into the prototypical courtyard. The landscape is not in this image, so you just really have buildings. And you can see that there's front porches, and right at the corner on the ground floor, there's a porch up above it on the upper floor unit as well. There is, these courtyards are kind of like the courtyards that are ubiquitous in Midtown. There's one across the street from McKinley Park that is one-story only, and a little bit tighter than these. These are a little bit broader, but they're three-story tall, so they'll have that Pasadena sort of prototype courtyard sort of feel to them as well. And, and so at each of the throats of, at the, the throats of each of those courtyards, it's going to be another, is a small community gathering space. It may be nothing more than a little gazebo with a couple of benches, but some of them will have a bike repair facility or a little barbecue area, so we're going to vary what some of the amenities are in those areas. So there'll be porch, outdoor gathering spaces at each of those courtyards. Hit the wrong button, obviously. Thank you. Oh, you can do this. Great. You know what? I'm going to let you do this. Okay, thank you. So next slide, please. That's what I was trying to do. So this is sort of a blow-up of one of the specific areas along Tower Bridge Gateway. And what we're doing here is a more classic Back Bay, Boston, or Baltimore kind of stoop for the ground floor with walk-ups and the like, and then each of those will have a porch in front of it. And then on the upper level, you can see the darker volume that projects, that's a porch up on top of that for the second floor units. And then over on your right, there is a void on the upper floor, and that is, that's a room-sized porch for the third floor units. The third floor units on the Tower Bridge Gateway side are all penthouses, and they're all two-story units with master suites on the upper level that have these large porches as well. So we've got, even though Tower Bridge Gateway is a big street, we've got a lot of, a lot of texture to it in terms of breaking up the mass, that projecting volume will actually be a subtly more different color when we get back into the larger elevations. I'll explain why we're trying to keep, keep the coloring on those two volumes relatively constant, although varying them slightly, and then carving up the shape. Over on the right-hand side of the image, you can see the breezeway that takes you along the fourth street right away and back into the, the, the inside of the project. Next slide, please. So this is coming out a little bit. This is the main entry into the project from Fourth Street. It will be our leasing window where, and it's going to be our icon that talks about the project as a whole and its relationship to the larger community. We're looking at a ground floor there that would be a conference room that we would make available to neighborhood groups or businesses in the community or residents here, because we want to have something that will be active as much as possible out in the street. And that has a breezeway that connects back through, and the leasing office is right behind on that conference room. And then up on top, you can see the little sloped roof, and that is an outdoor community porch that groups of residents will be able to reserve for parties if they want to, or if there's not a party reserved, then anybody can go up there. We're doing as much as we can to sort of engage the ballpark and views into the ballpark as we can. And that will be the place where there will be a community access to overlooking the ballpark. We're going to put a little barbecue up there, a little gas grill and a sink and things like that, so that people can use it effectively. Okay, next slide, please. So that's just a quick view of the, the lighting. You can see the scale of the windows a little bit better in this kind of view. Down at the right end is the, is the, is the retail, the live-work spaces down at the right end, end of it. And you can start getting a sense of the porches and, and the like as well. Next slide, please. And then this is a view at the live-work, and, and there's another entrance. We have entrances into the main Tower Bridge Gateway building. We have entrances into the main Tower Bridge Gateway building at both ends, at the middle and at the ends. And at the western end, there's, there's a third elevator. And because it's full four stories at this end, we wanted an entry that would come right off of getting, coming from Tower Bridge into, into the building. Next slide. And then this is the backside. You're looking down into the parking. We've stripped out of this view all of the other courtyard buildings, so you're looking at it without, with it, without as much context. But you can see the breezeway and how we have this grand stairway that comes down from the Tower Bridge Gateway side of the building. You can look into the, into the breezeway and, and see that opening. And then on the left is the community, the core of the community facilities. And I'm gonna finish up by just talking about what those are. One is, you can see the little gazebo structure up on top of the roof there. That's gonna be a big rooftop lawn area. We'll probably do something where have images of having yoga classes up there in the morning and things of that sort. We're probably gonna turn that trellis into sort of a tree-like sort of structure that has vines growing on it and is probably a larger scale than what that is. And then we have the usual things, a pool, a pool that's larger than typical standards for this kind of community, a spa, a lounge with a fireplace in it, and of course a gym. And the gym is scaled up a little bit as well because we're looking at young, active population here in all likelihood. A business center, which is relatively typical for large apartment projects these days as well. But then we've got a bunch of extraordinary things. We're gonna have a place to do outdoor movies. We're gonna have a stage that's gonna be elevated above the parkway, the park area with electrical connections to be able to do evening, evening concerts. We're gonna have a bike repair facility, as well as one bike parking space for every single dwelling unit. We're gonna have, we're gonna make provision for dogs, a place to walk the dogs, a little place to wash your dog outside as well. And then of course, a park. It's a small park. It's about 100 by 100 feet, but it's enough to throw a frisbee around, play volleyball, volleyball in, and, and let the kids run around as well. And then at the junction, right at the, actually right out in front here where those grand steps are, it doesn't evidence itself in this, in this view, but there's gonna be sort of a hardscape festival environment where we can do farmers' markets and things of that sort within the community as well. A basketball court will be in that area as well. And then last but not least, we're gonna have a place where CSA, I keep forgetting what the acronym stands for, Community...
Supported Agriculture.
Supported Agriculture. Thank you. As you know, in Yolo County, there's a lot of farms that are doing this nowadays where the, so we're gonna have a place where that kind of organization can come and drop off boxes for the residents of the community as well. So with that, I think some of you are familiar with the work that we've done in terms of building community and the projects we've worked on in the region. And we're after all of that here, and we're really proud to be working on this. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So David, you, you talked almost entirely about what's in Phase Two. Could you cover the other, other than the one picture of the courtyard building, could you go through some of the rest of the project?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
And I have one comment. If you could go back to the slide of the site plan. You can see the clubhouse coming off the back. We've agreed with staff that that entire clubhouse will be disconnected from the back of the building and be fully in Phase One. So Phase One will be a complete project with a full amenity package, and we've done that in order to have stability between the two phases. So the full amenity package will be delivered with the first unit. And if you go back to, anyway, that was it.
Yeah, thank you. Why don't you go back to the third slide, please? The site plan. That's it, right there. Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you, Christopher. Okay, so, so Phase One has, is dominated by these courtyards. And all of the units face into the courtyard. None of them are not connected with the courtyard. Every single unit has a front porch or an upstairs patio. And then at the end of each courtyard, there will be a little amenity area. Some of them will be more elaborate than others as well. And there'll be a path through each of those to connect from Third to Fourth Street and from Fourth to Fifth Street as well. And then we have one building that's rotated on the southeast corner of it that is more oriented to the street and overlooks the, the amenities complex. And so, the sort of trapezoidal-shaped volume that is adjacent to the pool is the common areas. That's where the lounge and the outdoor theater and the rooftop, rooftop yoga space will be, and, and of course, the pool is pretty evident as well. Just to the left of that, or to the west of that, is the festival environment that I talked about. And then we only have really a couple of parking areas that aren't enclosed in buildings behind garage doors. And that is one that is at the northern boundary with the adjacent residential between Third and Fourth Street because we didn't wanna have residents overlooking that area, and it was a good backspace. We've worked really hard to make sure that parking is not evident any more than it absolutely has to be in this project. And we had a place where backing onto that adjacent property worked well. And then we have another spot at the southern end of the block between Third and Fourth Street as well that backs up to the, the parking in the future Tower Bridge Gateway building that is also uncovered parking as well. So, Wolf has been extremely aggressive about green parameters. We're doing things like doing central hot water in all of the buildings individually so that we can have the potential in the first phase or even future phases to put in solar hot water. We're gonna, we will be submetering the hot water in all of the individual units. We're setting up all the electrical systems so we can either do photovoltaics right off the bat with the solar. Where of course, the, one of the reasons for the orientation of the buildings is one so that, a couple of the reasons is so that we can have the courtyards off of the dominant streets on the east and the west, and also so that we can have rooftops that are oriented. The structures that, if you go to the next slide, Dan, you wanna jump?
I did, I did. I wanted to just, just mention something that's really important to us. We, we believe in the changing of the rental demographic in the United States. There's lots of people that are long-term renters that don't have a desire to, to own a home, and they're an important part of the community. And as you look at these courtyards, we have studied how people interact with their neighbors and why they stay in a particular project. And our goal here is to create communities of long-term renters, people that know each other and feed the cat when they're, to get stuck on an airport, you know, in an airport. And, you know, the important things that make up a neighborhood. And David's design, villages, neighborhoods, streetscape, and I, he's done such a great job of it, and it's such an important part of the assignment that we started with, that I wanted to make sure that that called out, was called out, and that you understood that we're building community here. And that these, these, these neighborhoods, they're facing each other, and we've put the parking away from where people interact, and that's just important.
Thank you, Dan. So, every unit in, in Phase One will have a parking space associated with their unit. Of course, we're doing ground-floor handicap units dominantly. The Tower Bridge Gateway will be 100% handicap accessible. And then if you'll notice, on the left-hand side of the drawing in front of you, typically these kind of alley-loaded buildings will have the parking coming all the way to the end of the building. What we've done is take spaces on the ground floor and wrap them around the parking and put kitchens there because kitchens are a good use and a place where you need surveillance, but you want just a little bit of a sense of protection as well. So we actually have habitable space that wraps around the parking structure so that you don't see the parking from the street any more than is absolutely necessary. So, we've textured these buildings a lot, whereas the Tower Bridge Gateway tends to be, you know, a little bit more monolithic, although we've broken the mass down, we're keeping the coloring a little bit more constant as well because we have that texture and character in the Washington neighborhood. The aesthetic has a little bit of tradition to it. That's one of the reasons we picked the horizontal lap siding because again, the Washington neighborhood has a lot of that. But, but the massing and the window placement and organizations is definitely has more of a, more modern kind of character and feel to it. So, anyway, I can't think of anything else I wanna say about the...
You have a Fifth Street streetscape elevation? I wanna turn to that. You, the last set of things that are in this thing, you didn't go through.
Yes.
And so, this is a, I know for me at least, this is an issue of significant interest, which is how does it, how does it relate to the street? These, what you, the pictures you've shown us are all the courtyards, but there's also these repeating alleys.
Right, right.
And so how, you know, how does this actually appear and feel from street level?
Well, what we've done is taken, taken the alley accesses and narrowed them up as much as Public Works will allow us to, so that we can landscape those as intensely as possible. So, you really have, I can't point, you really have three alleys, so to speak. One is on the south side of the most left, I'm sorry, the north side or the left side of the left building. Another is between the second and third building, and then another is to the south of the fourth building. And, and you can see the end of the Tower Bridge Gateway building there as well with the lobby, the vertical glass component is the lobby for the housing there and you, and the retail as well. So, there, there will be alleys there. It's, they're a little bit wider than a typical midtown Sacramento alley in terms of the drive surface. They're 26 feet instead of, I'm sorry, 30 feet instead of 20 feet, but the buildings come right to the alley. So they'll have a feel and character that'll be relatively similar to what a midtown alley will, will feel like.
And is that difference because of us?
Actually, it's in the general building code, really. Well, I'm trying to remember, I'm gonna, yes, it is. It has to do with the building code, and it's not just West Sacramento's. In order to provide adequate fire separation between the buildings, because the ground floors are garage doors, we have to have a 30-foot separation between the buildings. Normally, we probably do that with about 24 feet or thereabouts.
So those midtown alleys just aren't safe, or? I mean, the reason I ask is, I mean, you designed both Metro Place here and Metro Square in midtown.
Right.
And they are essentially identical except on the ground. Metro Place here is much, you have much more of a feeling of concrete than you do at Metro Square.
That's right.
It's small, I mean, and it is these small requirements, many of which are, no offense to the chief, many of which are generated by fire and then by garbage and then by other, you know, every department has its own standards, which when they get added up, in, to some extent, defeat the whole purpose of the urban design. And so I just, before we get to that point, because after we built Metro Place, I'm like, why does this not look like Metro Square? And it's a great, it's a great neighborhood, but it could've been better. And I think even, you know, the residents there would like it to be greener than it is, but it's because of those requirements that we had imposed that were different from what might be more appropriate for that kind of environment.
Well, that's a wonderful analogy, Mayor, and I, and I will speak to it. I just, to be honest, we did the original conceptual work for the Metro, what do they call it? Place here in, in West Sacramento. But indeed, the site plan was executed by an engineering firm. And we are very, very aggressive about, you know, some of the parameters that you're concerned about, and I spent hours and hours and hours with City of Sacramento's staff. And so, and the difference is, to sort of get to the point, the difference is, is that all of that space and the pavement is out in front, and that's very different from this. This is, we've really set them up to be alleys. Those courtyards are what is gonna dominate the experience of this community, the openings, the end elevations, and in the courtyard. And we've taken the alleys and throttled them down as much as we can, and we'll be able to throttle them down even more because we haven't shown vegetation in these, in these images. So, this is, I'm very clear about what your concern is. This project is designed with explicit concern for, for what you're getting at.
The other question, just in terms of elevations, what we don't, what we, what we can't see is what Phase One would look like from Tower Bridge Gateway without Phase Two. And given the, if the, if the two phases are, I mean, if we're proving both or one or the other, that matters, right? It makes a, it makes a big difference for one of our most important streets. If there is no Phase Two, what is the elevate, what does it look like to just look at, at Phase One all by itself? Do you have, have you done any of those by chance?
Well, we know. I mean, I'm trying to think if we have anything in the images that does that, and I don't think I do. And I wanna, wanna speak to the sort of broader question a little bit, and that is, the Wolf Company and your staff are absolutely committed to us doing Phase Two. And everybody knows, and that's what got Dan excited about this site. That's what got him excited, and that's why he's here, that's why he's working on it. And we have probably just one natty issue that is putting a risk factor in place, and that's the PG&E pipeline. And staff is being very, very thoughtful about how they approach it so that we can maximize success. And I just wanna emphasize that everybody's committed to making that second phase work. So, Dan wants to add.
Yeah, I do. If you could go back to the first, first image. First of all, I think that, that Phase One, we're, we have resigned ourselves that Phase One by itself would look, is gonna look great. I mean, if we can't build Phase Two for some technical reason that we can't surmount, then we have to have a project that we can rent and live with and have, have long-term viability. So that, that imagery, you're correct, we don't have that tonight. But we do have exactly what those buildings would look like. There's a significant elevation difference, and the trees would remain, and there'd be the, Capitol Avenue would, would remain a street. I mean, we'd, we'd have to, you know, put paving over it, and we have, we haven't come up with a plan for exactly how we do that. But it is viable, the amenities would be separate, and the architecture, we know exactly what those buildings would look like, and, and we're, we believe that, that it does have long-term viability if in fact that were to occur. So, that...
No, I understand. It's just, if we're approving the design guidelines, we don't know, I mean, maybe our staff has seen that. We don't, I don't know what it would look like. I mean, our port channel would be deep and different one for PG&E line that we discovered 25 years ago. So I just, if that's, if that is a, if that is a potential outcome, that one of our most important streets, you know, one of our, you know, top three or four most important streets in the city, it, it makes a big difference right at the gateway, what it, what the, what the visual impact is, what the interaction with the street is at that point. So it's hard to, hard to grant approval for, for design of a project that would go for that we can't even get a visualization of. And I, and I appreciate that you wouldn't build one that you didn't think made sense because you, I mean, if an ugly project, you know, an ugly elevation at that, at that side is not of, to advantage, to the advantage of the economics of the project either. So I appreciate that, that you're committed to it for the same reasons that we are. It's just to vote on a design, on a designer view without having a visual of what it, what is a reasonable potential outcome is, is a challenge.
Okay. Let me walk you through it as best I can because I do have all the bits and pieces here. I just don't have a comprehensive view. So, if we could go to the third slide again. Thank you. So, you've got the Tower Bridge Gateway, and there's a row of trees along the north side of the parking there, and that is approximately where the property line is between the city-owned property and the Rayleigh's Landing property. And so, what, if I can, if you can start from the east or your, your right, you're gonna see the end of two buildings there that is going to look very much like the, the streetscape along, along Fifth Street that you saw in, in one of the slides you had us go to before Mayor. And then you will see a freestanding building that will be the community, community facilities. And I'll, after I'm done sort of walking you through this, I'll take you to that, the images of that building again, so you can get a sense of what that is going to feel like. And then you get to Fourth Street, and then on the left between Fourth and Fifth is, you'll basically see the alley... And then, on the left between Fourth and Fifth is, you'll basically see the alley side of one of the long courtyard buildings. And with that, let's advance through the slides and, so that'll be the mix of things. You'll see one long building, like you will along G Street. And so, that's the, that's sort of an, an end condition on the, the eastern end of it, with those end of the, ends of the buildings will be. And by the way, all the buildings, we have one module that is common on all of Third and Fifth Street. And we're developing two different elevations for that, so we can get some variety on the streetscape as well. It's not reflected in the, in this drawing. So, that's the buildings that are on the east. And then, let's jump a slide and then let's keep going, and then keep going, and one more, keep going. Okay, there. And so, Mayor, you can see the sort of attitude and character of the community building. It's looking at it from the south side, but there will be a north side that we know is going to have to look as good as, as that south side. So, that's the character and attitude of the, of the community building. It'll be an open structure with lots of visibility. It'll be very crisp, very modern, kind of a, in a contrast to the somewhat more traditional elements that are the residential components. And then, let's jump probably a few slides, keep going, going. Okay, one more, okay, there. And that is the alley side of the prototypical courtyard building on that slide there. And as you can see, it's garage doors, it's very straightforward, it's an alley, alley elevation. What isn't shown in this is that all of the south-facing walls will have trellises over the windows. We won't be putting them on the north. This will be a south-facing elevation, so it will have trellises. We just drew the simpler prototype sort of thing.
And in this portion, so this, this 40% or 45% of the, of what would be the no, the Phase One only view from Tower Bridge Gateway, do you also, is it, is it also a row of striped parking?
There, there will be backing up to the property line between West Capitol Avenue and Phase One. There will be a row of parking there, that's right.
Mayor, if you refer to Attachment Nine, that's the phasing plan, that probably may give you a little bit more insight than the illustrative.
Yeah, no, I, I, no, I understand the, the components. I'm just trying to, to imagine what it would, what the, what the visual experience would be walking or driving or biking down Tower Bridge Gateway, right when you cross the bridge, what, you know, what you're going to be looking at, all right, so, okay. Okay.
Just a couple.
Mr. Kristoff?
One, you said you want to reduce the amount of colors. Is it three colors? I see a green, a dark blue and a light blue, and that's about it, or with the exception of a white trim and something like that?
You're referring specifically to the Tower Bridge Gateway Building?
Right.
Or, because there's probably going to be about six or seven colors, you know, in, in the three-story elements, because we're breaking that up more. The Tower Bridge Gateway Building will be three dominant colors. We're going to have, you know, the, the blue, the green, and then the community temple-ish kind of form in the middle that'll be white.
Okay.
Literally white. And then, there will be, and then the mezzanines up on top are more of a beige kind of color. We debated whether or not to make those really apparent or let the, you know, the broken cornice line of the, the basic volume dominate. And we decided to let those fade back a little bit, but that'll be a lighter color. In fact, the color board is going around, thank you very much. And then, the, the volumes that project out will be a darker blue and a darker green, subtle, because we sort of want to balance between maintaining a unity to those masses and then having variations in them with the, with the carve-outs, the additions, and then some very subtle color variations as well.
And they are, and this project is LEED certified, to what degree?
Well, we probably will not pursue LEED certification, but we don't have anything in our office that isn't at least gold. And most of the stuff going on in the office is platinum or better. If we're chasing some money to help with the solar components of the project, if we get there, I, 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 I'm not 100% certain, but we'll probably be close to platinum if not to platinum.
Okay. So, can I say the stoops? I, I like the stoops, I like the Tower Bridge Gateway elevation, but, but they, the, the stoop approach that we've seen in our region often replicates the look of East Coast stoops, but not the function, because everybody drives, everything's parked, you enter from the back, your mail comes to a box, not to the front. There's, there's no reason for anybody to ever go to the front yard other than to shush away all of the yellow, the 500 copies of Yellow Pages and throw away papers that have collected on their, on their steps. Is that, is there something about this design that, that makes these, not Hollywood stoops, but real, but, but a meaningful interaction with the Tower Bridge Gateway?
Yeah, well, you know, we think because of their location, people coming home, that there will be a more than reasonable propensity to come through that door and use that door. I, I'm, you know, one refinement that we're looking at, oh, you're, you're going to nail it right on, thank you, is that I think those brick volumes are a little bit too heavy. We're going to, we're going to, we want to mass them down a little bit and we're going to make the stairs wider so that they can function as a Back Bay Boston stoop a little bit more. Right now, those steps don't seem it, but they're actually about five feet wide, you know, which is about like that. And we want to get them up a foot or two and reduce the brick, brick volume a little bit. So, you've got that. The unfortunate reality is, is that if people are driving here, they have a parking place, they're probably going to come through the elevator. And, you know, that's the reality of it, Mayor. And, and, you know, we, we're doing all that we can to make sure that it is convenient, easy and comfortable to use these front, front entryways. But we can't guarantee it.
Except for upping the parking by 15%, right? I mean, that, I mean, you're, you, right? I mean, you're required to provide 471, this plan in total, counting what you're asking us to do to the public realm, is 537 parking spaces, so it's parked more than what, it's, it's parked more than what we require, which is a baseline, obviously, we're not, we're not the one, we're not selling the unit. I mean, we're not renting the unit, so you have a different calculation. But it's parked at a higher rate than our normal requirements would, would induce, which, which suggests that you, you are expecting a, a higher level of car usage? Am I, am I wrong?
You, you've hit on the essential issue for this project. And it is that we are building a project in the present that needs to evolve into a changing community. And the parking rules that we've learned in this type of a situation are that if it's a great project and people move in and there isn't enough parking, they stay a year and then they move out. And they're not there long enough to become part of the, of the community, because the, not being able to find a parking space is a constant irritant. And so, we've tried, not tried, we have designed a project that, that exists in the current environment and has enough parking to deal with people's habits today. And then, as their habits change, which means people that work at Cal Sturs see that it's a great place and they move in and they walk to work. The trolley comes in and they change their habits. People bike into downtown Sacramento to their jobs. So, the first thing we have to do is get people here and get them living here. And then, over time, we change their habits. And in order to get them to establish residency and become part of the community, we cannot irritate them with that parking goal that I think that as urbanists, we, we tend to shoot for. So, this is actually, in our opinion, a pretty good solution to a, to a difficult problem. And as for the stoops, we think that what we've just, I've just described will, as people's habits change, they have the opportunity to enter through that front door and walk across the street to a ballgame and walk out their front door and down the sidewalk to a community event, because it's easier than going into the back hallway. So, there's a lot of clever mechanisms that have gone into this project that allow for that sort of evolution to occur.
And a couple of things I'd like to add. One is that in the process of working same things out with the fire department and sort of, and with Public Works as far as the perimeter street parking as well, our parking count's going to go down by at least 10 to 20 additional spaces, I know that. And so, that, that's, that's one factor. There was one more thing that I wanted to add to that. I can't remember what it is, so we'll just have to sort of pass on. I, oh, I know, you know, this kind of a project, in most circumstances in Sacramento, other than smack dab in the middle of Midtown, would park at about 1.8 to 1.9 parking spaces per dwelling unit. We're at, at, at worst or best, depending upon your perspective, we're 1.3 onsite. We're probably going to end up more like 1.22. And, you know, I, I think it's important to remember that we don't want the Wolf Company to fail. We want them to succeed. And on an interim basis, we're going to need to provide something that moves us towards the current market in some form or manner. We're, we, we hope to pull people from Midtown, that's how it's going to be marketed and approached. But we know that we're going to be competing against projects in DeTomas as well.
Tell me, where in, where in the region where this has happened, where the, this natural evolution has occurred and residents have not taken torches to the city council when they tried to take away parking later on?
If you don't mind, that was going to be my question. What, how, what triggers the interim parking? How is that going to, how, I mean, maybe staff has the solution.
Oh, then the Third Street parking, I don't know, that's a good question.
Yeah, immaculate, immaculate parking disappearance over time. It's, I, I mean, I get the theory, I just, as I'm thinking about how that, you know, as folks move in because there's plentiful parking, depending, depending on how you define that.
Well, the politics are, theoretically, the congestion will get worse because you're going to have more development in the community and, and there will be as many constituents complaining about the congestion and want the lane back. That's, that's a shot at it.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know.
I think too, you need to be.
I mean, Gleb, excuse me, Mayor.
I mean, you've got a pretty good example across the street from Metro Square. And the restaurant and things that happened there really hasn't been done what, of course, we wanted it to do, because of the parking. And so, I think that's, that's really something you need to look at and be cognizant of as far, especially when you get into the retail component of this. And that is, they do need adequate parking so that the shoppers can shop or do whatever they do, or they can go eat or at the restaurant or the pizzeria, or whatever it was. But we've got a very good example of what inadequate parking does for a restaurant, especially in this kind of a setting. Because the apartment complex across from you isn't in that kind of setting.
Especially with a lease or, you know, a building that's charging lease rates for that restaurant space that are astronomical. I mean, there's a, I mean, I think there are a lot of reasons for that. But I mean, especially if the vision here is live work and retail will come eventually, by the time retail arrives, the residents here will already be so used to having this, this on-street parking as theirs. Right, it's, I own this space. And so, even from a retail perspective, I, I, I mean, I, the, the two issues that are, I mean, I'm just going to flag them now. I mean, and we'll hear more, I think, during the, both as my colleagues weigh in and as we hear some of the public testimony. But the two, the two flags for me are the, the, the elevation at Tower Bridge Gateway and the absence of Phase Two and the parking issue. I'm, 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 I'm pretty concerned about the amount of public realm parking that is being, being requested here. But those are, to, to me, those are the two issues in what is otherwise a, a strong project.
Yeah, and Councilmember Kristoff reminded me one more thing. That parking ratio doesn't include any allowance for parking for the retail. I mean, we'd have to carve retail parking out of those quantities.
Yeah.
So, that, that would impact it by probably another five one-hundredths of a percent or, you know, 10, 1/10th of a percent. I mean, 10% or 5%, somewhere in that range.
Mr. Johansson.
I just reinforced a couple of points here. First of all, I mean, I think the difference between this view in Boston would be that there's no cars parked out in front. And I know we're having a discussion about the density of parking, but the fact of the matter is, when you come off of Tower Bridge and there's cars parked there, cars, parallel parking, that's going to slow people down. And, you know, that's, right now, it's, it's, it's not a freeway off Tower Bridge, but it is pretty fast, regardless of what we've tried to do to slow it down. So, the extent that you have people parking along this, the whole way, parallel, like Midtown or New York or San Francisco, wherever. I mean, if you can't find a spot, you just don't park, you use something else. But that has, that has a visual effect of traffic calming, they're doing that in Midtown as well. Parking at different stages and people, it's, it's a visual thing. People understand people coming in and out, so there's, tends to be slower traffic. So, it helped to slow things down coming into West Sacramento. But that assumes that Phase Two is in. So, I, I think I agree with my colleagues that we need to get Phase Two in as part of this. Because that's really going to be, well, there's two things. It's going to be really the face of this project to West Sacramento. It'll set the character of the bridge. And the problem is, I think if you do Phase One, for some reason you don't do Phase Two, I'm not sure if that Phase Two is ever going to happen. Then you've got this huge expanse, then we've got basically widening an area that we intentionally tried to narrow down, down West Capitol Avenue, which, I don't, I don't think that would be repairable at that point. The other thing about parking, I, I know there's, you know, argument to keep cars off there, but for example, in our downtown here, there's not a lot of parking. And it's been a problem holding events down here, because, I mean, we don't have the transit place. And I mean, it's, it's a question rolling into this. And I would be concerned that if we have too few parking spaces allocated to places we're supposed to support retail or consumer, you're, you're not going to have enough volume in there to support a place. I mean, it's what we've seen at the River's Edge off the I-Street Bridge. I mean, it's, it's, there's really not a lot of parking, there may be other issues with that as well. So, you know, I've got a little bit different bent on parking, or parking. I think it's more looking to long-term, yes, we want to incorporate streetcar in there and, and, you know, not rely on cars, which is a good thing. And, and, you know, if we have to restrict the parking at some point in the future, we restrict the parking. And, you know, it's not an easement, and we have to make sure that the residents know it's not an easement. And, you know, it's renters, so people are going to move. And so, you're not really going to have this ingrained sense of fitness by space. So, there, there would be a rational, I think, for increasing parking at the beginning and phasing down at the end. But, yeah, I think my, my two concerns that are, are parking and Phase Two as well. I just have a little bit, a little bit different perspective on the parking issue.
Actually, I'm not sure it's that different, because I, I mean, the parking that serves the, the retail uses I'm supportive of, but that's one-hour parking, two-hour parking, you know, something in that, in that domain as opposed to parking that is intended to serve, that somebody parks in the morning all day long and it's, and then they come and ask us to make it residential permit parking and no one else can park. I mean, I've seen this story play, I've seen the movie before, we all have. So, why, let's get additional questions and initial comments on, out, if you have them. And then, I know we've got a couple of requests from the public to speak on this as well.
I'll, I'll wait to ask the republics, okay.
Just one other question. So, I would echo the previous comments regarding the, the elevation on Tower Bridge and the, the parking. Do you have any, any renderings or anything that, that shows what the elevation would look like on, fronting G Street on the backside, on the northern end of the project?
Yes, yes.
I, I was confused, I mean, as you're going through and I wasn't sure I was picking up on the right streets as you were. Thought I did, but you didn't, you didn't jive with what I looked at in the aerial view.
Oh, I'm sorry, go back, I missed it. I was so mesmerized by the slides changing. There we go, that's, that's, that's G Street.
Okay, that is G, okay, so that, so then, there is parking in front of that as well?
Any parking?
We, we are showing diagonal parking on the street. But, but the building's set back, there's lawn and landscape out in front. And there's individual doors to all the units, there are sidewalks and, and access points to all the units as well. The ground floor units have an independent entry. And then, the second and third floor units have a combined stairway that takes you up to four units there. And you can see all the bellies and the like as well. So, and just by the way, I think we could live with, with time constraints on that street parking.
All right, thank you. We're then going to proceed to the request for public comment, and the first is by Catherine Van Deest. And she will be followed by Tom Engel.
I just want to say as a adjoining neighbor on the Fourth Street piece, we have.
Uh, there's a. There's about a million people watching you on TV, and they can't hear if you're not at the mic.
Um, we just wanna say that as the adjoining neighbors to them on the property on Fourth Street, we have the residential parcel next to them, uh, that so far the considerations on their part and design changes and modifications have shown a good consideration to us for light and noise effects for the four parcels that are residential still. Have some of the same concerns that you have as far as coming off the Tower Bridge and the looks, especially in reference to, there's no guarantee on the second phase. But have noticed also that it seems that if the gas line can be resolved, I would get the impression that it's, um, likely that they would probably go straight in the second phase rather quickly. Because I think for them, when it comes to the design and the rentability and the long-term success of the whole project, the second phase is probably more important. But the first phase seemed to be easier to design and work with us neighbors immediately to say, what can we do to make this workable? So as adjoining neighbors, we're for it.
Thank you, Tom Engel.
Good evening. I was at the planning commission meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I find it a little unfortunate that they didn't have an opportunity to really, you know, give them any feedback because they only had an opportunity to say yes or no. And I found that a little unfortunate. They all, they wanted a little turnout on, on the Capitol Bridge, or on the Capitol Gateway Road. And I really find that, you know, I don't really think we need to do that. We just built the road. I think they can really find another way in and out for their little sales office. Sorry, for some of the parking, I know it's, it is an apartment complex. All that parking is gonna be underground, which I wasn't aware of at the time. So, which is, you know, I'm a lot happier with it being underground. I thought that the new bridge, the old road was gonna be basically a parking. According to the little aerial, that's kinda what it looked like. But with the parking underground and it's all open, and with the transients and whatnot, I think it would be nice to see some of that enclosed in garages, just to reduce some of the transients and whatnot. One of the things we do have is, we do have a Tower Bridge. And I really think the Tower Bridge is the center of our region, where I like to think the West is the best. And that's why I think this project is important, and Phase Two really does need to get built for the project to be a success. And if those issues could be resolved, I think that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the, uh, public comment requests that we had, so Mr. Ledesma?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you know, I'll echo some of the comments, uh, many of the comments that came up from my colleagues and the mayor during the conversation. And I'll start with, um, the, the, the issue on the Phase Two and, and, yeah, I'm, I'm not quite clear on, on, or honestly not clear, uh, on, on the issue with the pipeline and how that gets resolved. I, I do understand that everybody, I'll make a call on that tomorrow, but, um, but the, I, I think the intent is there, we want, everyone sees Phase Two happen. But we have to plan for, if it can't. And I think that's what I'm hearing, and I, and I would agree, looking at the phasing plan and the site plan. And I'm almost at a point where, you know, I, I can, I can actually visualize the, the, um, the elevations based on what you provided and what it might look like. And what I'm concerned about is on the West Capitol side, yes, there shows tree lines there, and there, will, will there still be parking, the parking still be needed? Uh, that looks to be on West Capitol, that's the question I have for you. It, on the backside of the, the Phase Two Tower-
You mean the four spaces that we're talking about?
I'm looking at, at the site plan, I'm sorry if you can read.
Yeah.
But right up along here, the tree line, there's, seems to be parking-
Yes.
Behind there. And will that still remain there if, will that be there in the Phase One development?
Yes, it would.
Okay, is it necessary with no Phase Two?
Uh, I believe it is, yes.
Okay. And without a Phase Two, I'm looking at the amenities, the, the pool, most notably, and the recreation room are, are, you know, are gonna be right up on the front of the property then. Is that a true statement?
That, that's correct. That, so the full amenity, uh, would be on the property line of Old Capitol Avenue, correct?
And, and I'm, I'm trying to be careful here, 'cause I'm trying not to walk into a convention that we're, we're getting stuck that there's no Phase Two, but we want a Phase Two. But I'm getting to the point where we almost need a contingency plan designed to mitigate. I mean, I feel like the community needs some sort of design element that, for some reason, if this does not happen, then we need to create a barrier between the West Capitol Avenue. I mean, I'm agreeing with the phasing, 'cause it probably has to happen to make this whole thing pencil. But we need that sort of reassurance for the community that we're not gonna walk away from this, this Phase Two and just have some trees and then a parking lot, and you can see the pool and, and the community will just, you know, it, it just won't, won't, won't fit to what we're trying to get to on Tower Bridge. 'Cause the, 'cause that, 'cause what, what gets to me is that if there were, if, if you go, went into this and you were excited about that the Phase One, uh, excuse me, Phase Two being the exciting part of the project, which I would agree with you. But if it wasn't possible, you would probably change the whole design of the Phase One to take advantage of that strip. So I'm not saying to change it, I'm saying we probably have, have a contingency plan to, to, to manage that.
I, I agree, and I think the, perhaps with the way to handle that as a condition on the project, that staff have, have that be a part of the, um, part of the final approval.
On the, on the park, you know, and I, I have to say that, you know, there's some parts of this, I, I know I met, met with you at one point and went through the designs of the-
You still on question? You still on question?
Do you have a question for me?
Different question, yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, but it is still a question. I was gonna excuse Dan if you were, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm talking to the-
Okay, so I can say-
Yes, yes, you can, I'm sorry. I'm just speaking, I'll stop my head. But when, I, I met with you, uh, the architect regarding this early, and I was very impressed, um, as was, it sounds like the planning commission was as well. Obviously, there were some changes about the courtyard design. I had some concerns about it initially because it didn't show landscaping, and it, it, it did come across in the visuals. I was concerned about just buildings standing there without much context of, and of anything coming out of the courtyard. But, uh, look at the site plan, I can see how this could work. So I, I am generally very good with this. I am concerned about the, 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 the parking. And it, I do have a question for staff, because how are we gonna work? I'm concerned like the mayor is about the interim nature of this parking. And I, I seem to remember eons ago, we were working with the previous, um, somebody, another developer was looking at this property, Signature, I think it was. And we were looking at this at, um, planning commission. And was there not some attempt to have the Ziggurat parking utilized? So, we, we spurred some conversation to utilize some of that parking? And I'm, I'm just trying to think of, we, we have an awful lot of parking going on here, and I'm not, to the mayor's point, I'm not sure it's in our best interest to have it all there, and we're, we're not gonna get it back.
My recollection, I believe on an interim, it was to use the Ziggurat because, as you may recall, the Washington Street, as it was known, was planned for a podium-type structure.
That's correct.
And, you know, market conditions at the point, you know, and financing did not warrant that per the developers', you know, perspective. So we kinda looked at an off-site location, but obviously that project didn't advance.
Right.
So we are where we're at. In regards to kind of the comments on Third Street, the plan internally with staff is to, you know, task a, a traffic study to look at the traffic volumes currently on Third Street. We do have supporting, you know, documentation, uh, from previous EIRs to do a good comparison of the reality versus what was, you know, initially kinda thought the volumes would be at this time. Our plan is to review those volumes, uh, meet with the development team, come up with a, kind of a, a period of a couple of years, two, three years. But, uh, continue with monitoring, uh, the volumes based on project-level approvals that occur within the area, and cover kind of our bases so that, you know, we have some fallback if, you know, there are the volumes that increase and we need to restripe it back to an existing travel lane. Your comment is, and the mayor's comment regarding going back, staff, you know, made that pretty clear to the, to the development team as well, that it's always a challenge to go back to a, a travel way when you, you know, have parking.
Well, what came to mind, what I was reminded of is, um, when we had, when the discussion went on earlier was that we don't want the parking to become, um, so, that, that the residents to become so comfortable with it that they won't give it up. And what, 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 what I reminded, that reminded me of the, the issue with the Ziggurat only because, you know, you, I don't wanna say you can't make it too comfortable for them, but it, you know, it won't, it's a lot easier if it's not terribly convenient for them. So it's just, it's a solution that I was suddenly reminded of. But I, I, you know, in regards to the, the parking and how we, how we address it, um, for the retail, I can agree with that, because even in midtown, in some of the retail areas and restaurants you go to, the parallel parking, not the, I'm sorry, the diagonal parking that occurs is an accepted norm there. Um, and I can see that here if we can get, get the right tenants, and that being a limited space and time, time-wise. But it's just the rest of the parking, on-street parking and whatnot, uh, for residents, I can see is, is going to be the problem, so.
That's all the comments I have. Yeah, I mean, I, the other thing I'd add is, we, we, the encroaching into Third and Fifth Street is, seems like a non-issue today, which it is, 'cause we, we don't, those, those travel lanes are not, uh, they're not necessary for capacity. But we are, I mean, we're building out the Bridge District right now, and we extend, we required the Bridge District. We told them, no, you're gonna have to call this Fifth Street, because it's gonna be a major arterial that's connecting the whole city. And so, and that's not 10 years from now. I mean, we are, we've got projects that are in the pipeline right now in the Bridge District. And so I think narrowing the, the linkage that we've just built between the North and the South, or the North and the Old South of the, of the city, um, I, I, I'm concerned about that. So I, I, to me, 60 on-street parking spaces that requires to narrow Fifth and, and Third and Tower Bridge Gateway, all for parking is too much. There ought to be on-street parking that can support the retail at both ends, the, the for-sure retail and the live-work retail. But the scale of this much on-street parking and its impacts, I think, on both the project and on, on how, how folks move and on the street capacity that we've just tried to create as a connector is, is concerning to me. And it's not, it's not, I mean, if, if parking is that important to the, to the project, then the project should provide more parking at the project, um, that, that's unrelated, for, for the residential-related parking, the commercial par, parking, I, I think, you know, we should have a role to play in helping to support that to the extent we can make that work. The other challenge is just, and I know this is what, what you have been describing and why the, some of the specifics on the parking aren't, aren't fully articulated yet is, um, I mean, I think everyone now that travels on Tower Bridge Gateway and/or Fifth and/or West Capitol knows this is an horrible intersection. It's like the new park in Jefferson with these streets all coming together. It feels like the light at, um, if you're coming on Tower Bridge Gateway to go anywhere, the light at Fifth Street takes about an hour to change, and then it changes for about five seconds. Three cars get to go through. And I'm hopeful, I hope some of that can get better. But part of that is because of the entry of West Capitol right at that location as well. So, you know, messing too much with the, with the lanes in that, in that vicinity has, you know, we need to be careful of the other consequences of that, which is unfortunate, because that's right where the primary retail site is. And so trying to find the right balances, I know what you're, what both the developer and our staff are trying to work through, but, but the, but the issues on both sides of that, on that, of the ledger mat are a great deal. Charlene, would you-
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, on Fifth Street, we're not gonna be converting a travel lane to parking. The proposal, the, the, the parallel parking would be outside of the existing travel lanes. And then the parking that's showing on the site plan, um, that is right at the intersection you were just talking about, that is going to be removed. There's a condition that actually prohibits that parallel parking right in that short stretch because of all the turning movements right in that intersection. Engineering and transportation staff found that to be, um, a safety concern. Uh, the Third Street is the one that they had requested to convert a travel lane, uh, to parking in an interim condition. And, you know, from an engineering, transportation standpoint, staff said, we could see how that could work. But it's, we need to look at it from traffic volumes. We need to figure out when the traffic volumes occur that would, we would need that travel lane back, and we wouldn't wanna wait to the last minute. There's also streetcar that we need to consider, because Third Street was designed to allow streetcar to go down to it. And we don't, not quite sure how that plays into this. So we kinda wanted to engage one of our on-call traffic consultants, who's familiar in that area, to give us a little bit more guidance about, uh, the potential for on-street parking on Third Street. And then again, too, to bring it up to you, just from a pure policy standpoint, of how you even felt about that, 'cause it's not something we've ever really talked about with council before, converting an existing travel lane to parking, especially so soon after we just constructed it.
Right, and what the traffic model can't tell you is how impossible it will be to change, even, even if you put a trigger point, even if it's an automatic trigger, this number of cars per day will automatically switch, we'll have a room full of people saying, that's where I park every day, and you, I moved in here because you told me I could park right on this street, and now I can't. And the, the, all the people who rely on it to move, to move through the city, they will have a small interest. But added together, it far outweighs the, you know, the six that will be here, but the six will, will have a great interest. So I, it, I, you know, it, as I said earlier, I think we, we have all seen this movie before, and that's just not a, that's not a reasonable expectation that that will be easily accomplished. And, and also, if, if these are live-work units, and we don't, we, we have no, uh, we have no necessary expectation that they will be retail units, um, it's not even necessary for the, for the, you know, for the, for the external perspective. The Fifth Street piece I get. You know, if we did some sort of time, time-restricted parking on Fifth Street, that's as proposed with the modifications that you described, that makes sense to serve the pro, the, the retail portion of the project. But the Third, the Third Street piece, I think, is, is a challenge. Mr. Kristoff?
Yeah, I rem, yeah, Charlene, you can stay. Because I think you touched on it earlier, and that was, I, I, in the staff report, there was an intersection because of parallel par, no, I'm sorry, because of diagonal parking was, um, suspect as far as not being safe. So three, we were gonna lose three parking places there, is that, is that what it was?
Which intersection is-
Yeah, I think you were referring to is the, that T-intersection at West Capitol, Fifth Street, kind of the, the conflict area that the mayor, uh, characterized and described is right at that T-intersection currently.
So is it three or four spaces that you're taking out?
The plan shows three. That we are prohibiting at that location. So the, the parallel parking that we would allow, or, uh, expected to allow, would be just, um, north of that intersection. And that would encompass roughly about 10 spaces on Fifth.
Yeah, so north, north of that driveway, that first driveway coming in-
Uh-huh.
-to the units, that's where the parallel parking would begin.
Okay.
On Fifth Street.
And can you describe how, uh, uh, on the Tower Bridge Gateway, the limited number of parking spaces that are requested on-street for the office, how that inter, how that would interact with the existing, I mean, is that by taking space out of the sidewalk or out of the bike lane, or-
Yeah, I might-
Where would that come from?
I might have Mark Collier come up on this one, 'cause he's, he's really taken a look at this from a standpoint of the physical improvements that we just did on Tower Bridge Gateway, the streetcar, the bicycle lane. There's a few things going on on this one.
Good evening. Basically, what's proposed is a, similar to a bus turnout. And there's actually one immediately adjacent to where they're proposing on TBG, just off of Third Street. So there'll be a transition in, it'll be a wide, a very localized wide spot in the road. But it will require, um, because it's parallel parking within it, you know, multi-point maneuvering to, to park, stopping in the traffic lane, backing in. And so, yeah, at this point, we have concerns regarding the safety of that type of a, a maneuver, given the various components that you, you're dealing with there. You know, the multiple lanes, relatively high speed, the bike lane and the streetcar. So those are the types of things we wanna look at, uh, with our traffic consultant as far as the safety aspect of, of having that parking at that location. And, and the turnout itself, back to your question, will eat into the, the landscaping strip. It won't affect the width of the sidewalk, which is behind the, the planter areas. You will lose, you know, you- You will lose, you know, your, the character of your streetscape for that localized area. I'm thinking if you, we haven't seen an exhibit yet, but if you put four to five spaces in there, 100 to 150 feet maybe with transitions.
And these, the, the part, that, that this and the other on-street parking pieces, are those, are those included in design review approval? And the action that you're requesting of us tonight, would, 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 would our adoption of your recommendation authorize the, the, those spaces to be taken out of the public ground?
Um, it could, the conditions, the way we have them, is to allow for further study on the Third Street and the Tower Bridge Gateway. So you could embellish that a little more to say, you know, you don't want those to be a part of the design review. They, they really aren't in a way because these parking spaces are not a requirement by the city, they're not counted, onsite parking is not counted towards their project. The design review guidelines do not speak to the on-street parking. It's, it's more of a request by the developer to, to have this all-encompassing in the project.
Yeah, I mean, that's why I said, I mean, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think that the granting of, of on-street parking was normally a design review issue, that that would be a separate, we would have to take a separate action.
Right.
To authorize the conversion of a street or a sidewalk to parking. Okay. So we can, so these issues can be separable.
They could be separated, yes.
If we're not, if we're not sold completely on this parking, on the parking piece, at least on, on Tower Bridge Gateway and Third Street, then we could, we could still grant designer review approval, although we have this issue around, which I think, which Mr. Ledesma raised around, well, we've all raised in one form or another around the phase one, phase two issue, which, and I, and I absolutely agree with the, with the contingency notion because, I mean, it, it would just be sheer luck that, that, you know, the best land use plan for, and design plan for this, for this new neighborhood could be, you know, stripped of one of, one of its sites and it would still absolutely, that, that, what the remainder would, would still be the best for, for the, for the, for what was left over. And, and I don't think it is. I mean, the, the, that, what we would be left with is the accidental elevation, which nobody wants. I mean, and, and it's not, the concern isn't that, that we're trying to hem the, hem the developer in or that we're concerned that developer just wants to do phase one and not phase two, that's not it at all. It's just that, that the circum, we have got to look at, if the circumstance emerges that we're stuck in without phase two, what, what do we have? What have we, what have we placed at this, at this very significant location? And so paying, paying another level of attention to what phase one on the Tower Bridge Gateway side looks like in the absence of phase two, I, to me, I think is, is, is the fundamental issue left from the conversation tonight.
Would the council want to see maybe that returned to them, just for that specific? Or would you be comfortable with having that portion run through the, our more standard design review where it's then again publicly noticed for just the phase one, only that elevation?
I, I think given the amount that we've vested at this point, we, we would want to see it. So we would be able to grant designer review approval with a contingency, right? Is that, isn't that, I think that's what was described in the.
Yes.
Colleague between Mr. Nethercutt and Mr. Ledesma. So as a, grant approval with a contingency that if, if it's, that the phase one only would have a separate approval for designer review as it relates to Tower Bridge Gateway or something in that nature.
Okay.
That we're talking about.
All right.
Poor, poor Toby Ross.
I'm actually looking at the.
His last meeting and he's sitting there shaking his head, what is, man?
I thought it was a great suggestion.
A standing O. All right.
I was actually looking at the city attorney to see whether or not he concurred with this.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I think you can, you could do design review subject to final council approval of elevations for phase one.
Okay.
Charlene, Johansson.
Yeah, just, the setback between phase one and phase two is, what's the distance between Tower Bridge Gateway and Phase One?
It's about 120 feet wide, I believe.
So potentially that could be 120 feet wide, nothingness, irregardless of, regardless of what the elevation is.
That is the potential. I mean, we think that, we're hopeful that we'll be able to overcome some of the barriers on phase two with the, with the developer and it moves forward all as one. But if we can't, then the chances of someone else coming in and overcoming those same barriers are probably limited. So we, staff thought about that and said, well, what, what could we do with that site if we just could not get the gas line relocated and some of the other issues? And, you know, it, it could be parking, but I don't think you want that, but that would be somewhat of a revenue generator possibility. It could be a really cool linear park that would, you know, kind of provide that connection to the Riverwalk. So that, that's, that's kind of what we came up with.
And I think this is a good, a good reason why the designer review should come back to us because that's going to be, ultimately will need to be part of the, part of the, that equation and the developer can only do so much with the phase, I mean, with, with the phase one piece, the actual, what's in the 120 feet matters, will matter just as much as what the phase one frontage looks like. And so to, to ask the developer to try to solve the problem all by, all by themselves, if that, if that turns out to be an unsolvable challenge, I think is, isn't reasonable. So having that, that final piece come back to us so that we can also say, okay, here's, that's an appropriate revision of, of the phase one frontage on Tower Bridge Gateway, given that we now intend to do a linear park or we intend to do something, you know, some gigantic farmers market or something that will be in that location.
Charlene, where are we in the process, where, where are we in the pipeline, ownership, land ownership issues as far as that particular piece of property? Where are we in all that?
We're still working with our title company on that.
Working with who?
With our title company.
Oh, the title company.
Yeah, yeah. On, on clearing up all the, any title issues that are out there.
Okay, so, well, even if the title company is supportive of our position, how long will it take for, I believe it's PG&E.
Yes.
To move the, and replace the pipes?
That's a good question because right now, their current position is that it wouldn't fall under the franchise agreement. So, and we're, we're taking, we're not taking that position. In other words, we're telling PG&E that line falls under the franchise agreement, therefore you need to relocate it at, at their expense. And they're taking the position that, no, it doesn't fall under those parameters and therefore it'll just be the development's expense. So we haven't even really got to the timelines yet.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, so do we have a, a motion then to bring us together what we've discussed? Mr. Ledesma?
I'm trying to recollect everything we discussed. I'll make the motion with, I think we, we asked for a condition on, for a contingency plan on Tower Bridge Gateway and that would come back to us, I believe. Were there any other changes?
Would that need to go to Planning Commission first for a recommendation?
I don't think it would have to.
Oh, I think it should.
I just want to give Charlene something to do.
Because we're not talking about a change, we're just talking about an additional view, essentially. If council directed there were, the changes be made, that might need to go back to Planning Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, time is of the essence.
Yes, it is.
I mean, for the, for the economics of the project and for the, for the work that the developer's doing. So I, I mean, to the extent that it can come directly back here as expeditiously and simply as possible, I think is, is ideal.
Yep.
So it would be that, and, and then the parking, the, at least the Tower Bridge Gateway and the Third Street parking would be excised from this and we'd take that up in a different venue.
Okay.
Moved with, with said, yeah.
Moved by Mr. Ledesma and seconded by Mr. Johansson, seeing no further discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, turned down. Motion carries. Thank you. I think it's item 16, which is continued consideration of administrative policy specifying certain authorities delegated to the city manager. Mr. Ross?
Yes. In June, you reviewed the various powers that had been expanded and came up with five categories where you wanted to review and possibly modify those, those expansions. We've come back with information on them and a theme that's probably applicable to all of them and that is, you, you could eliminate them or modify them, or you could provide additional mechanisms for calibrating or reviewing or monitoring the actions so that there's the communication possibility. So I, what I thought I'd do is quickly go through the five with the recommendations and then you can provide some guidance for us. The first is the issue of records management retention. This is essentially a process by which we make some changes that typically are prompted by legislation or court rulings or some other interpretation. We modify our retention policy and it doesn't require that it come back. What we're suggesting as the, as a possibility here, rather than simply eliminating that whole capacity, would be to have periodic reporting back to the council on those actions that are taken. We don't have independent authority to change retention policies, but they get changed on us all the time and it would be more or less pro forma for the council. We're just saying it's more efficient if the, if the city manager can do that, but then report back at some frequency. We're suggesting a relatively long frequency, but it could be, you know, anything from six months to two years to come back. Not, not, we'll just come back and then you would certify what's gone on to that point and then we'd come back again. And as you can see, we do them a couple of times a year, but it's not, sometimes they come in clusters. So that's, that's the recommendation on the first one. The second one is the issue of authority with respect to purchasing and, and contracts, professional service contracts. We provided some information that we didn't have previously, which is the level of authority that's available in, in Davis, Woodland and Hillo County. And I think we're generally in the, in the mix there, not, not as much as Woodland, but generally similar to what the county in Davis has. Here again, we're saying that maybe it isn't so much the level that you want to modify, but the question of, okay, what information is exchanged so that you can provide understanding and guidance of what's going on. So in this instance, we're recommending that the authority remain the same, but that there be a process of reporting where all the actions that were taken in the previous six months would return to the council. You could have greater or lesser frequency than that, but we would achieve the monitoring through that mechanism, not, not the change of the limit. The third is the authorized position list. This again, I think, is a situation where maybe there was not as much clarity about what goes on here. Basically, what, the authority of the city manager here is not the ability to add positions to the city or change positions on the list, it's to make modifications to that list when, for example, you approve a reorganization and you approve the, we don't, we don't then have to bring the list back to you with all 350 employees. We do that annually, but in the interim, we have to change it for our own internal administrative procedures. And so that's what we're suggesting here is that basically we, that authority would remain, but then it would automatically come back annually when we do our budgets and, and there wouldn't, there isn't any authority to create positions, it's simply to modify that list. The next item is the question of severance. This is, this has been a capacity that has served us well, but I think appropriately the mayor identified that, that we may not be doing as much of this as we have in the past. But it, it happens and it happens sometimes, it's not so much the frequency, but sometimes it happens just as a, a way to resolve a naughty personnel issue without a lot of public exposure and, and public concern and, and not having to have the council wrestle with these things that are really difficult to do in the public session. And so we're suggesting that, that maybe, again, a reporting procedure on when it is used and how it's used would then be able to give the council some guidance, or allow the council to provide some guidance to the city manager as to the appropriate use there. And finally, the alternative payment for impact fees. We're suggesting here that, that authority could be reserved to the council, but we were suggesting rather than amend the municipal code, which is a more cumbersome process, we simply modify the book of fees to provide guidance on, on when and how and by what method we would select alternatives. So that's a quick overview. I'd be interested in any discussion that the council has on these items in any direction.
So can I say, is it the, on the authorized position list, that it was things like making, forming changes to the reorgs, but we don't see those, do we?
You do if it, if it, a position has to be created.
Or eliminated, or?
Or eliminated, yes.
Okay.
And, and sometimes, sometimes we come to you with some, some new position and you approve that position and then, then it gets reflected in the list. We can't create a new position. We can, traditionally we've had the ability to underfill and we're, we're assuming that's not what you're after here, but we can't create a new position and we can't raise people's salaries.
The only area where I, where I don't agree is on the severance packages. That's, those are, I, when we are in, when we had to do a lot of them all at once for budgetary reasons, I don't think we had, we had a good alternative. But I, I am uncomfortable having the authority to grant what is essentially a gift of public funds to an individual to ease, to, in an area when it may not be budget-driven. It's just, it's a difficult, it's a difficult personnel action to take. That's a significant amount of money that can be given to an individual for not working, for not producing for the, for the city without our authorization. So as a fiscal matter, I was prepared to, to support that as an interim measure, but not as a, I mean, it's, it's, I mean, it's an, for some employees, it's a lot of, it's a large allocation, outlay of, of city funds that the, the council should have some role to, to, to review.
Is there some amount that, that the council would be comfortable with or do you want all of these items to come back to you?
All right. I mean, even a month or two is fine, but, but six months is just, that's a significant, I mean, for the, yeah, it's a, that can be a lot of money.
Sixty days or something.
Sixty days seems reasonable. Yep. Other comments about the recommendation, the discussion?
It's not a lot of money, guys. Like, um, yeah, I call it a lot of money.
If I can just ask a clarifying question, so on, on those severance packages and, so the process, excuse me, the process would be that as those conditions or situations come up and there's, and the city manager considers those, would it come and, because part of what I think you're getting at here is, is that, would those go in the closed session? Would, I mean, would, would those have to be open to the public? I'm kind of under, trying to get an understanding of those situations because I think that's part of the process that's been.
Under some circumstances, they might, if we, if it went under a litigation exception, but as a labor matter or personnel matter, you can't approve, authorize the payment of money in closed session, so that would need to be put on an open session agenda. So it, it really depends on the circumstances. So it, it really depends on the circumstances.
Okay.
And so for the, for the alternatives to payment for the childcare impact fee, so we're just asking for more specificity then at this point? Is that?
Can I, can I make one clarification? The subject might be able to be discussed in closed session, but the final action, unless it was as part in the context of resolution of a claim, would need to be taken in open session.
I just wanted to understand.
What did you, what was, what was your question?
No, I'm, I'm sorry, I just went, I didn't realize it wasn't finished.
No, it was on
The childcare, yeah. So really, all we're looking for at this point is just more specificity for the process that we're gonna use, rather than, because it didn't specify who could make the determination after, it looks like after further review, so, um...
Right.
So we're just looking for some more specificity on that.
I, I think all we were really suggesting here is, um, the municipal code already provides for a mechanism to approve something else. What we would suggest is that we come back with a, um, a resol- part of the book of fees, which we can change readily. We'll come back with some language that we think would be workable, you can approve that or modify that, and if that doesn't work for, after a time, we can come back and change it again, rather than amending the code, which eliminates that provision, but is also a more, more complicated process.
Yeah, any, any others?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve the attached administrative policy, um, which gives really more specificity to consult, to consolidate cer- certain authorities with the, and make the approve, uh, the amendment to the approve of severance package to two months instead of six months, and bring that back to the council in an appropriate manner.
Yes, and some of these things, we, they're just administrative policy, so we will do them, and then we'll just give you the information. In the case of the, uh, item number five, it'll actually come back as, as a part of a overall book of fee package.
All right, so that's a motion by Mr. Kristof. Is there a second? Then seconded by Mayor Protenbiagis, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, hearing done, motion carries. The council calendar, Ms. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, wanted to, um, point out that the Planning Commission meeting on the nineteenth is gonna be canceled. And also, um, on the, the next item on the calendar, um, at the last meeting, there was some discussion about possibly canceling the, um, August fifteenth meeting, because there is a Yolo County, um, it's a gala for elected officials for the Yolo County Fair, and there, there was apparently some interest on the part of the council to, uh, possibly attend that, so you, you asked that we consider that? Are we just bringing it to your attention for, for consideration?
By, by council, do you mean one of us, or someone with access to some, one of our emails? I, I'm not, I, I'm comfortable meeting on that night myself, but, yeah, I think I-
It was brought up at the last meeting, yeah.
I think, I think we're, we're prepared to keep our agenda, I mean, our calendar the way it was. Okay, any questions on the calendar? City manager reports?
I just wanted to, uh, thank you very much for the proclamation, but more importantly, to thank you for ten years of very solid support, and, uh, really, I think, a very positive working relationship that I will cherish the rest, the rest of my life, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Toby.
Questions for the city manager? It's gonna be the time to really pounce.
The only one, I sort of feel, I sort of feel sorry for Toby and Marty both, because usually our council meetings go about an hour, hour and a half, and this is Toby's last meeting, and it goes for, gosh, six hours.
Don't feel too bad, he does.
Marty's gotta be going over there, "The hell did I get myself into?"
Uh, city attorney report. Staff direction for members of the council? Mr. Ledesma, are you, are, are future agenda item requests?
Thank you, I would like to, if it's not already on the calendar for the next, the next council meeting, is to ask, um, to add to the agenda, uh, an advisory measure to be put on the ballot, uh, per the community investment plan, there was a recommendation within that that we talked about, um, that-
It would, it would be on the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second, Mr. Ledesma, seconded by Mr. Kristof. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing done, motion carries, meeting is adjourned.